Again, good afternoon. We're gonna start. Our agenda has been changed a little bit where we have discussion topics first and then board items will come afterwards. I would like to ask all the board members until we completed the presentations if we can hold all the questions, please, so that we can get through. The first item on your agenda today is the charter school presentation and Melissa Brady will come forth and bring those.
We received three charter applications on February 1st, 2018, and today, all three applicants will be present to present a five-minute summary of their proposed school. First, we have Language Literacy for Learning. This application was submitted as our children's prep on August 1st but was denied. Charter statute changed on July 1st, 2017, and now charter applications are submitted on February 1. This allowed Language Literacy for Learning to be resubmitted. The applicant rebranded the school and assembled new board members. The presenter today is Dr. Tandrea Collins. The proposed location of the school is Winter Haven. The school focus is ESC. The student population of the -- well, the school will serve pre-K through 12th grade and its first-year enrollment will be 305 students.
Good afternoon.
I'm Dr. Tandrea Collins and I am representing the Language and Literacy Academy for Learning. Our targeted population will include students with IEPs and family support plans. We will enroll -- we will, excuse me, we will enroll children from 12 months to 8th grade with mild to moderate cognitive, communicative, physical, mental, emotional, and behavioral disabilities, as well as students from 12 months old to 12th grade with profound to severe cognitive, communicative, feeding, breathing, physical, mental, and/or emotional behavior disabilities. These are considered our participatory and supportive students. We will assist the district in approving its goals by focusing on the students with disabilities and reducing or increasing their graduation rates. According to the 2017 LEA profile, Polk County only had 47% of their students with disabilities to graduate with standard diplomas as compared to 64% of Florida. The Language and Literacy Academy will help the district with this goal by using an accelerated curriculum by Voyager. We will use an educational and therapeutic model that will include speech therapists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, ABA therapists, and mental health counselor. We will also delegate specific time for professional learning communities to work on highly effective teachers. We will also use the Marzano's framework of the new art and science of teaching. Our academic design will include blended instructional approaches and language-enriched scaffolding techniques, multisensory approaches, hands-on lessons, and manipulatives. Our curriculum will be engaging, innovative, have high interest, and we will utilize technology. According to the most recent research, the National Center for Educational Statistics recognized the need to have more speech-language pathologists to collaborate with teachers to support students who struggle with academic language and literacy. Language and literacy components of reading, writing, listening, and speaking are embedded throughout the standards. Links between literacy and language achievement and vocabulary are critical components for a student to become a skilled reader. A recommended approach to help students develop into skilled readers will include robust vocabulary instruction. Therefore, the Language and Literacy Academy will use the vocabulary scenario technique to assist in vocabulary instruction inside the classrooms. Our school is centrally located in Winter Haven. The structure that exists there now is move-in ready. We will also have six portables installed to increase our capacity. Our student population will include about 40% white, about 23% black, about 33% Hispanic, and less than 1% for Creo, his Asian, Native American, and Pacific Islanders. I completely forgot. The district relations. I have met with the charter, the off, the charter, the Office of Charter Schools. I've met with the ESC department, the transportation department, and the financial departments. Individually and collectively, I will continue to foster these relationships with the district. For example, I also attended the ESC symposium that was held this weekend to support the ESC department in educating this, the parents regarding students with disabilities. Evidence of support came from the president and CEO of Special Olympics Florida, Area 8 Sports Director of Special Olympics, Vice President of Fifth Third Bank, Deputy County Manager for Public Safety of Polk County, Haynes City City Manager, Camellia Garden Club of Winter Haven, Ponce de Leon Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and we also partnered with Heads, Deveraux, Heartland, and Peace River. Our governance and financial structure includes the Office of Charter Schools and our board members, and then the principal will also hire the payroll company who will handle our HR and our benefits, and we will have a business manager that will take care of accounts receivables and accounts payable. All of these will be hired in-house and we will not outsource any of those. Thank you.
Next, we have Anthony Grant who will present the application for Best Career and Technical Vocational High School. This application was submitted on August 1st, 2017, but the applicant withdrew the application to make corrections. The name was changed from Grant Career and Technical Education Center. The proposed location is Haynes City. The school's focus is STEM, workforce readiness, and career and technical education. It will serve nine, grades 9 through 12, with a first-year enrollment of 250 students.
Good afternoon, superintendent. The statement of need. All our children, regardless of circumstances in which they are born, are entitled to the highest quality of public education, public education. Best Career and Technical Education Vocational High School is seeking to provide a rigorous achievement-driven education to students of Haynes City. Best CTE will recruit students from the neighborhoods throughout East Polk County. Many areas surrounding Haynes City serves an overpopulated schools with all types of groups and students. School overcrowded. Polk County is one of the largest school districts in both Florida and the United States. Polk County is also one of the fastest-growing. The table above demonstrates Polk County schools having by, have grown by 5,000. Students, as, as you see, basically between 2008 to 2015, 5,000 students have accumulated to, grown in the public schools in Polk County. Keeping up with the new workforce expansion and the new creative employment demands, it will be a high need of not only Polk County but by the United States provides STEM training to students to ensure they receive the proper training for, for an ever-changing world. Best CTE will assist with meeting these demands by encompassing a STEM focus and implementing the following strategies, as you see on the PowerPoint. Education beyond the classroom provides a weekly or bi-weekly experience designed to get students out of the regular classroom setting for instruction in marine biology, vocational performance tasks, clinicals, or supporting their academic, our academic Polk County is specific, has, Polk County has specific needs that has to be met. Lack of school choice is Best CTE's focus area population. School of choice has too stringent enrollment policies and a lack of transportation to schools of choice. Best CTE intends to extend and, extend to alleviate the needs by completing the following. The location of the school was chosen for a very, variety of reasons. Here is a list of, of the reasons why we chose this location. As previously mentioned, the focus area that the school will serve currently has limited numbers of school choice options. We feel that the, that the addition of the school to this area will greatly improve the school choice options available to the parents and the students. The overpopulated students who will attend Best CTE will receive workforce-ready training and career and technical education certification that is unique and aligned with the Polk County workforce demands. These students will obtain specific training and certifications while completing their high school diploma requirements. In addition to daily instructions in language arts, math, science, and social science, there is a strong emphasis on marine biology, vocational education, and aeronautics. Best CTE also offers a unique field actively, program known as Education Beyond the Classroom. This experience, this experience-based learning program is designed to give each student's learning opportunity to change both their minds and the body. Best CTE has agreed to collaborate with Safety Solutions and Construction and Education Research for their vocational certifications. School demographics. Best CTE planning target community is Auburndale, Winter Haven, Haynes City, Ridge Community, and Lake Region. This will help to reduce active overcrowding in these areas. The second table is the population projection of whom Best CTE anticipates to attract a sizable portion from these target areas in Polk County, from low, medium, to high. Community support. Best CTE.
Thank you all very much.
Next, we have Damian Moses to present the application for Bach North. It is a high-performing replication application. This application was submitted on August 1st, 2017, but was denied. Charter statute changed July 1, 2017, and now charter applications are submitted on February 1. This allowed Bach North to be resubmitted. The proposed lake, location is Lake Wales as a STEM focus. It will serve grades 6 through 8 and its first-year enrollment will be 200 students.
Good afternoon. My name is Damian Moses. I'm the principal at Edward W. Bach Academy. The application for Edward W. Bach Academy North is not an application for a new school. We are seeking only to replicate Edward W. Bach Academy designated high-performing school. The replicated school will be known as Bach North, while the existing school will be known as Bach Academy. Presently, Bach Academy has a waiting list, depending on the time of year, between 400 and 500 students. Students and families who can't get into Bach Academy are leaving Lake Wales to attend other public and private schools out of town. Bach North will enable us to serve the needs of the waiting list students and keep Lake Wales students at home. The two schools will be comparable. The student demographics will be the same, and in both schools, and the curriculum and methods that have served Bach Academy so well will also be employed at Bach North. We seek to start Bach North next year with 200 students, as said by Ms. Brady, 6th grade, to be housed in a classroom at First Baptist Church in Lake Wales. These are the same classrooms that, when we started the first Bach Academy, that we began 10 years ago, in the same classrooms in the same setting. The folks that all drafted, the various aspects of our application, are actually here with me today. So, they were more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
At this time, if there are any questions from the board members to any of the applicants or Ms. Brady, we'll take it this time.
We should probably start with the first one, second, right?
Yes. If we could.
Yeah, could we do that?
So, we have the first, Ms. Brady, can you kind of help facilitate that? I know we're in a different setting.
Can I just add?
Yeah. I think Dr. Collins. We had the learning, the language literacy for learning.
Right.
That's correct. Ms. Sellers.
On yours, on the budget, you had a, other income sources, and you have very specific amounts in that there, but what are those other income sources?
I actually would need to take a look at, is it okay if I bring the binder up?
Yes.
That would be the revenue from the therapy services.
From Medicaid?
From, from the insurance, Medicaid, yes, ma'am.
Yes, that's, okay.
Ms. Connie Hampden, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. You indicated during the presentation that you have six portables to be installed?
Yes.
Can you tell me what that's going to be used for?
That is going to be for middle school, 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, and also the, our pre-K, the 12-month-old, the 12-month-olds to the three-year-olds.
12 months old to the three-year-olds?
Yes.
And middle?
Yes.
And have those portables been reviewed and are they on order or hope to be ordered? Or what is the status? Because that's a huge financial investment.
Yes, those portables, it's actually gonna cost us about $90,000 to get them. They've already been identified, we just have to get them moved to our location.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harris?
I'd like to go back to your last slide that you shared with us.
Okay.
And that was the slide that displayed your organizational chart. And I'm a little confused. Does the principal, according to this organizational chart, if we can get that up, does the principal report to the Office of Charter Schools or to the Board of Directors of this school?
I'm going to be reporting to the Board of Directors.
Because your organizational chart and your board members and principal are all on the same level. As you can see here, both report to the Charter School office. And then the principal only has two people reporting to them, and the board members have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 people reporting to the board. Who are those seven people?
The seven people are the board members, which are--
Oh, that's the board?
That's the board.
Okay, then underneath that you're describing is the principal.
Yes.
But the flow chart shows the board and the principal are on the same level.
And it should be underneath. I apologize for that. Yes, I will be reporting to the board.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on this charter application? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Next, we would like to have questions if Best Career and Technical Vocational High School could please come up, and if we have any questions at that time for this presenter. Mr. Harris?
On your business plan?
Yes, sir.
Under A, explain the school's facility needs, including desired location, size, and layout of space.
Yes.
I looked at your address of 1711 East Hinson Avenue in Haynes City, and I did a calculation. You're 3.8 miles from Ridge Career College, which is your competitor, according to your application, though I don't think your application looks at it as the competitor. It seems to be that you're aiming at the high schools. I then refer you to the needs assessment, the second page, under lack of school choice. The Polk County School Board has made a strong effort to increase school choice within the county through the opening of several magnet schools and the approval of multiple charter schools. Nevertheless, the areas in which these schools of choice, particularly at the high school level, are located are still inadequate within the county. I don't see this application as competing against Haynes City and Ridge Community, it's competing against Ridge Career College, and we've got plenty of opening there, and all the magnet programs at the high schools are schools of choice. Our career academies are schools of choice. So, there's a lot of school choice at the high school level, but also, your population appears to be eligible for Ridge Career College because high school students can go there.
Yes, it's not, it wasn't designed to be as a competitive. It's designed to, to alleviate the amount of over students that's in those areas.
But we don't have an overpopulation at Ridge Community College.
Haynes City High School might have over, does have overpopulation, so we were, we were going with--
But they are also eligible to go to Ridge Career College if they so choose.
That is correct.
So, tell us and sell us on why they would go to your charter school versus going to Ridge Career College.
Yes, because we offer the, the Education Beyond the Classroom, and we also offer certification classes that they can do the clinicals on a, actual real-wide, real-world status. Education beyond the classroom basically brings the students out of the classroom setting into the workforce, into the, the hospitals, into the vocational schools, and, and not to schools, or even the vocational trade, so they can see the real-world on-job experience, and that's part of their classroom life. So, the students that are undecided, instead of just taking the academic and just hoping that this is for them, they'll be able to go out there and experience it.
So, I gather in your collection of information about the existing options that kids have, you did evaluate what those options are at Ridge?
Yes, sir.
And you found that they do not offer outside-the-classroom options for kids?
They do offer some, yes, sir, they do. Just that we're offering the different one, the other ones that they don't offer, like plumbing, electrical, marine, excuse me, marine biology, the, the areas that they're not covering.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sellers?
I just, you said the building was gonna cost $70,000?
To renovate?
To re, no, $70,000 to purchase and $20,000 to renovate. I just, those figures to house 500 students. It says the anticipated cost of the lot and standing structure is approximately $50,000 with renovation costs at approximately $20,000.
Yes.
So--
It, it, it's not to purchase, I, I didn't have down there. Does it say to purchase?
It says the, no, it just says the anticipated cost--
Correct.
--of the lot and standing structures.
That's--
So, it sounds like you're purchasing--
Negative, we're not purchasing, we are leasing. We will, we will be leasing that building, and the $50,000 with the $20,000 is reference to the technical equipment and stuff that we have to bring into the school to revamp the school, and the $20,000 renovation is to put up some bar, walls.
Okay. It, it, it's very confusing how it's written.
I'm sorry.
Because I just read it word for word.
Yes, ma'am.
And it sounded like you only had $20,000 for renovation. I was concerned with how low those amounts, amounts were, because I know renovation is usually, especially somewhere I read extensive renovation, and you can't do extensive renovation with that type of money.
What's unique about that location is it used to be the Social Security Building, so they already have all the equipment, everything really, basically, it's move-in ready, literally. Only thing we have to do is put up a couple partitions to separate the rooms.
So, all of that money you were talking about is just renovating, and then you're gonna rent, lease?
We lease.
You're leasing it?
Lease the location, yes, ma'am.
And the only other question I had, too, was about, for the expenses, computers and equipment for 500 students, and you've got $60,000. Well, I'm assuming you're talking about not only computers, but the equipment for the vocational?
Vocational doesn't need hardly any equipment in the school, per se, because we're taking the kids out to Safety Solutions where they have all the clinicals and the performance tasks, all the equipment that the students will need in order to get their physical applications. We're just teaching them the academic aspect. And the, the computers, we're gonna be leasing the computers from Milner, so they, they will provide us with 200, 300 computers at an inexpensive price, including with the printers.
Okay, so you're leasing the, instead of--
Purchasing, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other questions? Ms. Fields?
Yes, I wanted to know, what makes your application unique and different than the neighboring schools?
Well, it's predominantly bounces right back to the Education Beyond the Classroom, that we are able to transport these students into real-world settings. You can, you, academic aspect, you can learn a lot from a book. A lot of students have that kinetic way of learning, that they would have to touch, feel, and breathe the, the environment that they're, they're looking to get into, whether or not that's conducive to what they're looking to do. And that's, that's what makes our school totally unique, because we're bringing them to these trade fields, and having them work side by side, have the trade fields coming into the school, and actually teaching some of the courses to the students.
And there is no neighboring school, no other school in the Haynes City area that's doing what you are proposing to do?
Ridge is doing something similar, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for this applicant? Okay, thank you. Next, we have the Bach North presenter. Do we have any questions for Bach North? Ms. Sellers?
Once again, in here, I'm just concerned about the Tier 1 and Tier 2 students, and I did not look at the children on the waitlist this year, but last year, there were a lot of children from your own schools that scored, had the Level Ones and Twos, and they were all on the waiting list. And you talked about it being a high-performing school. Are you going to take those children, the Level Ones and Level Twos, they're on the waiting list?
Yes, ma'am. We have, we currently have Level Ones and Two students at, at Bach. They, they come in as Level Ones and Twos, and, and the majority leave on level. We're very proud of that fact.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And you left out, you didn't say Lake Wales would get priority, but do you intend to give priority to the Lake Wa, like, the kids coming from your own charter system?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, we currently have that in place.
And, and they will go?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Harris?
I recall a conversation I had many years ago with one of the founders from the Lake Wales community of these five charter schools, and he indicated to me that the real strong desire of the community was to keep the kids who live in Lake Wales at home in their own I find it disingenuous that Lake Wales then would accept students from other cities outside of Lake Wales. That falls outside of what the intent was, according to this gentleman I met with several years ago. I look at your need statement, 1A, the second sentence says, "Families not selected for Edward W. Bach Academy are leaving Lake Wales to enroll their students in out-of-town schools." I would just like to make the point that there are open seats in the community of Lake Wales to go to middle school, so there's no need for an additional set of seats to be open when there are seats already available for the students who live in Lake Wales to go to McLaughlin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Townsend, then Ms. Reynolds.
Just to clarify real, real quick, you guys, you guys will still have the Tier 1, Tier 2 admission system? I'm sorry?
We have Level 1, Level, we, the admission system, actually, we went through Ms. Brady and her department and had the, the different issues that were in place prior, Mr. Townsend, were addressed and approved through her department.
Okay, well, just so, so I'm clear, I'm, I'm not talking about Level 1 to achievement level, I'm talking about, there were, there were sort of a two-- level, I'm talking about, there were sort of a two, there was a, the way I remember this being phrased was, there were two sort of pools you were pulling from, there was, there was a tier one pool and a tier two pool, you're not doing that, you're not having a tier one, tier two anymore?
We have actually changed up the, the process.
Okay. One of the things you said just now that, that struck me was, was that you're expecting similar demographics?
Yes sir.
Well, last time I checked, BACH was sixty percent white. If, I don't know mathematically how you can make that work, in, I mean, and demographically, do you, do you mean the, the, the same ESE profile, and the same out-of-Lake Wales profile?
Demographic, we have over forty percent of our students are minorities, and so it aligns with what we have as far as the community goes, as far as those numbers.
Okay, I just, I, I thought the idea of BACH two was to actually have demographics that would look more like McLaughlin than, than, than BACH one, but, you know, to rep, to replicate the program, but with demographics that, that, that looked, that looked more like McLaughlin's, is that not correct?
That, that is correct, yes sir, but, I mean, the, the demographics being the same would be the same as the community that we serve.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Reynolds?
I think when Ms. Sellers asked her question, there was a little bit of conflicting information, you said that you will be using the same system to allow those students on the waitlist to be accepted from the Lake Wales community with first priority, but if they were first priority, then why do we have students from other communities that are currently enrolled at BACH, not coming from Lake Wales Charter Schools-
Right.
-that have been selected above the students in Lake Wales?
Well, we have, we have many of our, our staff, like myself, I actually live in Bartow, and so our staff that are part of Lake Wales Charter School System, those students actually can come and take, actually get enrolled into BACH Academy, or any of the other, of the other Lake Wales Charter Schools.
I, I mean, I can, could probably name thirty at least that are, are not, that is the, not the scenario, that live outside of Lake Wales, that are currently at BACH, so that's-
Yeah, that are, that are actually-
Concerning to me.
But we have, we do have staff members that there's, that children actually do come to Lake Wales Charter School System.
Oh, and, no, I understand that, my question is, you know, if there's students now that are there, that's family members do not work for Lake Wales Charter System, that live outside of the Lake Wales community, yet there are not students there that live in Lake Wales because they're on the waitlist, then in the future, is that going to be remedied, so that Lake Wales students are truly getting in first before the Winter Haven and Haynes City and?
We have, we actually put something in place this year where those students that are from Lake Wales Charter System, they actually get priority over those students in the selection process.
Okay, back to Mr. Townsend.
Sorry, I, I ask this more directly, do you expect BACH North to be sixty percent white?
I couldn't, I don't know who's applying yet, Mr., Mr. Townsend, I mean, we, I, I mean, the goal of course is to be comparable with the current, the current BACH Academy in the community.
Okay, and, and isn't Janie Howard, Howard Wilson, thirty percent white?
No, I'm not sure, I'm not sure about those numbers.
Okay.
Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you, couple of things, with the BACH North being a replication school, and kudos to you for-
Yes ma'am.
-a wonderful facility and a wonderful education-
Yes ma'am.
-for the students of Lake Wales. You're looking at, help me, sixth grade, starting off with two hundred students, correct?
Yes ma'am.
At the First Baptist Church there?
Yes ma'am.
In Lake Wales, so would we be looking at, starting with sixth grade in the fall, and then a year later, looking to add seventh? So, so it's a, kind of a-
It would build.
Slowly but surely?
Yes.
Start off with two hundred, and then add your seventh grade behind that, and then eighth grade, so it'd be a three-year build-out, so to speak. Do you anticipate remaining at the First Baptist Church, or are you looking at another facility?
Well, I know that there has been the talks of purchasing a, a facility.
Okay.
And, and whether that be, you know, that particular structure, the First Baptist, or another, but then they're, we're in the talks with individuals trying to purchase the facility.
And as you have gone through this process to talk about the expansion and adding a replication middle school in the community, what has your community said to you? What kind of feedback have you received through this process, begun to do your research, both numbers, demographics, all of it, and the fact that also, McLaughlin sits right in the middle of the community, and we may be addressing that at a different meeting?
Yes ma'am.
But for now, we're here to discuss BACH North, so what has your, what have you heard?
It's been very positive, every year when we, students don't get accepted, there's always a, of course, there's an issue, but it's been very positive, the, the community as a whole has been very looking forward to the opportunity for their children to take part in BACH North.
And, and with the situation with McLaughlin, because it's real, you've heard three board members bring it up this morning, what can you say to us today to assure us that we are going to be very open-minded in the enrollment for BACH North? What I mean by that is that the demographics will be looked at very carefully to ensure that it in fact does replicate the demographics of our community there, and that we are taking children, levels one and two, that may be applying, and working with them to bring them up. I mean, it's, it's a huge piece of our community to keep our kids there, because ultimately, they go K through twelve, and the next step, quite frankly, as we know, is Lake Wales High School.
Yes.
And we want to prepare them for that.
Yes.
That's why we're in this business. So, tell me, what can you do to assure all of us up here that the way that this is going to be implemented is going to be done with the community and those, all those kids in mind?
Well, the board and, and Dr. Jackson have, are overseeing the, the process.
Okay.
And, and so he has one of the actual individuals that work within the Charter School Office as a part of that group, the application process.
Okay, so while you are using a process that in the past may have favored students outside of the community, when we come to BACH North for this replication, are we looking at fixing that, if that's the right word?
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am, and that's one of the things that we adjusted this year.
Okay, I needed to hear that direct.
Yes ma'am.
All right, sir, thank you, that concludes my questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Moses, and, and again, my question would be very similar to Mrs. Cunningham's, I mean, the, the real question, I think, on everyone's mind is, how do we ensure that we're, that we're representing the Lake Wales community with this, with this extension of BACH Academy? And as I understand it, you, you plan on doing that through the enrollment process, is that, is that essentially the plan?
Yes, we have, Dr. Jackson has a, a individual from his department actually working directly with that process.
So, they'll need to find a way to change that from the existing process, right? I mean-
A part of that particular, the current process is actually one that we went through with Polk County Schools, the Charter Office, to make sure that it was done correctly this past year, and so we'll continue doing that, like I said, with Dr. Jackson's office overseeing what was going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Fields?
I have a couple of questions, what kind of relationship do you currently have with McLaughlin?
Good.
And the other question is, do you envision collaborating and partnering, and maybe having some students from, from BACH to maybe participate in the arts?
Yeah, would love to.
Vice versa?
Would love to do that, we have, on, on many occasion, we've invited, we do different technology integration workshops and summits on our campus, and we've had some of the, a few of the McLaughlin instructional staff come and spend time with us, would love to have that, embrace that, and our kids take part in some of the great arts programs that are going on with, and, and McLaughlin, would, would very much enjoy that, Ms. Fields.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions, Mr. Wilson?
So, let me, let me be a little bit more clear, and as I was thinking about it, my, my question probably wasn't very clear. Clearly, it's got to be done through the enrollment process, but how do you, what will you be doing to encourage more people to apply, or is that an issue?
Actually going out and speaking at the different schools, we invite every school in Lake Wales out to actually tour the campus, and we do a presentation.
Oh, okay.
Yes sir, and, and the ones that can't come for whatever reason, normally, we will actually have a group go to that school and present to the fifth graders as well.
Thank you.
Yes sir.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. We're going to move next to our, our second item for discussion today, is the presentation of 2017 Self-Inured Growth Health Plan.
Do y'all have handouts? Do you have handouts? Because I didn't bring one.
No, um-
I don't believe we, we have the, yeah, we have the-
It's attached on this, there's two pages.
We could take a break and make copies if we-
Which one is she?
Because it's only a few pages, right? What did I see last night?
Why don't you do that, and I'll hand out the piece that I haven't handed out yet also, so they-
Oh, I know, but you can't write.
Okay.
Okay, you're good? Yeah, it is, it's the same one, never mind, I'll look at the one on here, and I'll make my notes, it's okay, it's just me, don't do it.
Good afternoon, so we have the financial report for the self-funded plan, we're going to kind of tag-team this, we have Allison Poole from Wakeley Consulting Group and Jan Bush from Robinson Bush, they're going to start off and go over the results of the plan, and as always, Ms. Myers, Ms. Hill, and myself are here for questions, direct questions on the plan and, and moving forward. I also have a copy, and I'm going to hand them out, I don't want to take attention away from Ms. Poole as she starts, but I have the minutes from last year when we talked about this, and board members made some really good comments, and we talked about the future and, and kind of how, kind of give a little background of how we got here. It's not, as I stated last, well, two weeks ago at the meeting, the plan didn't do as well as we expected, so we're going to go over that, but we were heading in this direction, and the minutes here show that, and then we could talk about, you'll see how we got from last year to, to this year based on the slides that we have. So, I'll ask Allison to come up and start, and I'll hand these out to you.
Thank you. So, what I'm going to do first is just give you a quick overview, we do this once a year, and since it's only once a year, just to remind those of you who have been on the board for a while, what we're doing, and then any new people, you will have an idea of what we're talking about. So, basically, we're talking about Florida Statute 11208, this statute allows government entities to self-fund their benefits that they provide to their employees. Polk County School Board, you provide your health benefits via a self-funded vehicle. So, this statute require, has certain requirements, since you're essentially running a small insurance plan, you have to report to the Office of Insurance Regulation once a year, usually within ninety days after the end of the plan year, for your plan, you file, you run on a calendar year, and generally, that filing is due at the end of March. The reporting that goes to the Office of Insurance Regulation, they are all required documents, we provide a, a, an income statement or profit and loss that tells how the plan did during the year, we are also providing a surplus statement that says, okay, at, at the end of this point in time, we had this much of additional money, our rainy day fund, essentially, and here's what we expect to happen over the next three years. So, for the current filing, we'd be reporting the income statement for 2017, we'd give the surplus, and then we'd also provide a projection of what we expect to happen for 2018, nineteen, and twenty. Those documents have a requirement that they are certified by an actuary, so he told you, I'm with Wakeley Consulting Group, I am an actuary, I'm a member of the American Academy of Actuaries, which is required by the statute. We have certain requirements we're signing or certifying the plan, one of those is that the plan is, is considered actuarially sound, and actuarially sound is essentially that you are covering your surplus, if you, or that you have a surplus. If you have a negative surplus, you're not actually covering your expenses, so we have to have, at, at worst, a zero surplus, and we have to be able to expect that going forward, you're going to be covering expenses, or that you won't be falling into a negative surplus position. So, those are our two requirements, our kind of basic requirements for being actuarially sound, so that kind of sets the stage for, for Jan.
Good afternoon, Board Superintendent, we're having a little bit of an AV issue here, it looks like, so do you have the PowerPoint presentation that's showing up? Okay, on slide four, this is a visual depiction of your claims trend, so the blue line is your claims expense, the red line is your revenue minus administrative expenses, so you can see, in 2013, there was a fairly significant increase to the funding of the plan, and so you can see that it went up, and then there has been no additional funding since 2013 to the plan, there have been no changes. In 2015, the Medicare-eligible retirees came out of the plan, so that impacted the revenue going in, as well as the expenses that are coming out of there, so things like your administrative fees and clinic expenses, et cetera, and as you've been developing the clinic, those expenses are also running through the self-funded health plan, and I guess from a, just a visual perspective, your claims trend is actually good, it's about four point four percent, which is better than the national average, the, the issue is obviously a revenue issue, it's not supporting the expenses that continue to go up, even though at a good pace, they're still going up, and every year that new revenue's not going in, it compounds, because you're going to see in a few minutes that, that's exactly what has happened here. On slide five, one of the issues that we thought might be important for the board to see is really the impact of the claims that have been over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the last two plan years. So, if you look at 2013, fourteen, and fifteen, at the bottom, you can see that those larger claims represented about twelve percent, twelve to thirteen percent of the total medical expense, in 2016, it went to seventeen point three percent, and in 2017, it went to twenty-one point four percent, so you can see the number of claims at the top that exceeded that amount, and the dollar amounts, and I think what's important, because I know we talk about the days in reserve and some of those issues, is that had those been the average of the previous three years, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, as opposed to what we saw happen in sixteen and seventeen, it was a sixteen-day impact in 2016, and it was an eighteen-day impact in 2017, so just the impact, and those are very difficult to predict, because you can see that it was very consistent for those three years previous, but in the last two years, the impact of those very large claim years, and they happen, had a pretty significant impact on the, on the plan. On page six, we wanted to have you see what the revenue and expense by member type, so the active employees on the top line, the board is putting in five hundred and seventy-four dollars a month for the active employees, and if you go to the very bottom, there's also a twenty-dollar clinic assessment that's funneling through as well to the plan. The average expense for the time period that we measured was about five hundred and eighty-eight dollars for the active employee, so about a sixty-six dollar gain. We also thought it might be interesting for you to see that in 2008, the board, this is what your rates were in 2008, so four hundred and forty dollars a month, ten years ago, so over the ten years, it's gone up about thirty percent, from four forty to five seventy-four, or about three percent a year. Spouses, the monthly premium that comes out of paychecks for spouses is four hundred and twenty-three dollars, and the average cost for the spouse is seven eighty-seven, so you can see that there's some subsidy there, and ten years ago, the rate was three sixty-eight for spouses, so that's gone up about fifteen percent over the last ten years. Children, you can see what the rates are for children, and we have a three-tiered structure, if you have one child, it's ninety-five dollars, if you have two children, it's a hundred and ninety dollars, and if you have two or more children, I'm sorry, three or more children, it's two hundred and fifteen dollars for the children, but you can see the composite expense per child is about two hundred and twenty-seven dollars, so there's a significant subsidy in that tier as well. Florida statute does require that you continue to offer benefits to retirees, and at no greater cost to what the cost is for an active employee, so right now, your retiree over six, I'm sorry, under sixty-five rate is five hundred and thirty-five dollars, the expense is almost a thousand dollars, it's about nine hundred and fifty-two dollars a month for that group, so some, some subsidy there as well, but the statute does require that you co-mingle their experience with your active plan experience. And the last line on that is your employee health clinic, you're collecting about twenty dollars per employee for the clinic, the expenses are running about thirty-four dollars, so there's a little bit of a, of a deficit there as well, the revenue that's going in for that particular benefit. Page seven- Page seven, and I think this is just, again, to reiterate that the plan's very well managed. These are the expenses. This is how your expenses are broken out in 2017. So claims, that would be everything that's running through Florida Blue or the pharmacy benefit, et cetera, is about 90% of the cost. And then the clinic is about 4.4. So if you consider that what's running through the Florida Blue plan as well as the clinic is providing healthcare to the employees and the health plan members, that's about 94.2% of every dollar, 92 cents on every dollar is going to actual healthcare for the folks that are, that are in the health plan. So about 5.8% is everything else. So that's actually a very, very well-managed plan from a dispense, distribution of expenses. At this point, Allison's going to come up and talk about the actual performance of the plan that will be part of her exhibits for the 11208 filing that she was mentioning. So I'm going to turn it back over to Allison.
So this page is a summary of the exhibits that will be in your packet. It's, they're labeled Polk County School Board draft exhibits. So if you can find those, that's what these are referring to. But essentially, this is the high-level overview. So the beginning balance is the surplus that you reported to the Office of Insurance Regulation at the end of 2016. That was $11.4 million. During the plan year of 2017, so that's all of 2017, there was about $101 million worth of revenue. The total expenses of the plan, that includes what Jan's, the Jan, Jan's breakdown that she just talked about, the $113 million. So the $100 million minus 113 is that 12.291. That's, so there was a loss essentially from that income statement. It'll be reporting a loss of $12.3 million. So our beginning balance for, for the year was $11.4 million. Minus the operating loss in 2017 has left the plan with an operator, with a surplus, a negative surplus of almost $98,000. So the Office of Insurance Regulation, like I said, for the actual certification, I have to have a positive surplus to be able to consider it actuarially sound. And the Office of Insurance Regulation considers 60 days of surplus as your safe harbor. That means that they, if you have 60 days in surplus, they don't start asking you additional questions about any other monies that might be available. So there, we can, we can certify with less than that and there are other ways of, of reporting other funds to the Office of Insurance Regulation, some things that the school board has taken advantage of in the past. We had projected the days in surplus to be about 27 days when we were here, when we were presenting this information last year. So slide nine, the next slide does show you a history for, from, since, at one point in time, the, the plan was reported on a plan year that ended in September. So you can see these early years are reporting based on September year, year end. And then you have the calendar year in 2010. So from 2011 to 2017, those are all calendar year reporting dates. You can see the board contribution. As Jan mentioned, the board contribution has stayed flat for six years or five years. You can see the revenue. There is some additional revenue that's based on some infusion of funds, just some flat amounts that were added into revenue. The expenses, you can see their actual profit and loss and then the final balance. You can see for plan years 13 through 15, you stayed right around that 60-day, just right above the 60 days of surplus. So those years were, we were working on maintaining that 60 days. So there was no letter and we were able to file with very little, very little issue. So slide 10. So this one takes a minute, so settle in. The dates on the left, those are the dates of the board presentation when we were here presenting to the results of the prior year. So the March 15, 2016 was reporting income for 2015, income and loss, profit and loss. But then it also had the projections. So the first column there are projections for 2016 based on 2015 data. The next column, the $11.3 million loss is projected loss for 2017 based on 2015 data. Then the final column is projected $17.5 million loss based on 15 data. Okay? The next row is based on 2016 data. So now we, if you compare to the row right above that, the $6 million was our projected loss and the actual loss was $2.6 million. The, what you have to consider on that $2.6 million is there was an infusion of about $3 million in 2016. So the actual loss would have been closer to about $5.6 million had there not been that infusion. So on the revenue basis, based on the actual contributions that are coming into the plan, the board and the employee contributions, the loss would have been $5.6 million. In that filing, we projected a $4.4 million loss for 17, $9 million loss for 18 and a $14.3 million loss for 19. So now we move to the next row, which is the current filing essentially. So what we're projecting, so 17 is the actual now. We have a $12.3 million loss that is in the filing. But there was also almost a $3 million transfer there as well. In 2017, there was a $2.9 million transfer. So again, the actual loss would have been closer to 15 to 16 million dollars had there not been that infusion of funds. So based on the actual revenue, the contributions coming into the plan, it would have been about 16, about $16 million, 15 to 16 million. So we're still projecting a loss for 18 of 17.2 million and a loss for 19 of 23.1 million. So if you consider those losses that are coming through there and we're starting out, our 2017 surplus is starting at just under a million dollar loss. And that becomes our beginning surplus for 18. We're projecting negative surplus for 18, 19 and 20 with no changes. If there's no additional revenue, no changes to the plan, the losses keep getting larger as the expenses increase. If everything remained the same, you would still be losing money. If there was no medical trend, if there was no, that there were no large claims, you would still be losing money. So the next slide. So at this point, based on what we know, we're not able to certify the plan as actuarially sound. We have suggested to Mike that we, an option that I have exercised with some other, with other clients is to provide a letter to the Office of Insurance Regulation that says we're working on the details, seeing, figuring out what can be done going forward. And this is March 13th. So it's difficult to file by March 31st and know what you, what your plan is in place going forward. So essentially, we'd be asking for an extension. There's no penalty for filing late, so that's not an issue. I've done with several plans and has allowed you some extra time to consider what, what the next few years should look like for you. So there are some options listed there. What are the options of possibly the board contribution changes? Restructuring dependent contributions, retiree contributions. The employee premiums, possibly on the employee, the single coverage. It's also possibly plan designs. Yeah. So can I answer any questions on, or can we answer any questions on?
Want to finish up? Do you have any other slides?
The next one's a question.
That was it.
Okay, we have questions for the team? I don't have the light. I see you all pushing. I think I saw Mr. Townsend going that direction, then Ms. Sellers.
So forgive me for probably an elementary question here, but we, we are able to currently pay claims, correct? We are, what, what, what amount of cash on hand do we have? To pay those claims?
Well, the group insurance fund today, and I would wish I could tell you that January was a better month and that we were moving in the right direction. But to the very contrary, it was not a good month at all. So the balance in SAP right now, as of January 31st, is a negative 2.6, 2 point. But there were some accruals that didn't get put in there. So it's actually closer to a $4 million loss in SAP for January. So it's not moving in the right direction, unfortunately. So I'm assuming general funds are supporting the claims expense today.
We're moving forward. We pay the claims. It's not that we're not paying our interiors. So we're okay there. We just need to move forward with a plan that is going to either, one, bring more revenue in or cut expenses. And so we are in the process of negotiating that with the unions. We've already met a few times and we have another one set for next week. And so before June 30th, we'll have to get together again and go over what that plan is. We will also, when we meet next month on the budget, as we've done in the past, we have put expenses, we'll show the revenue in, the current expenses and then any new additional ones that we need to set aside or think about setting aside. Salary and benefits being one of those. Any new initiatives or any, some of the turnaround expenses that we have, we try to pull those out to show what, then the final balance will be and what we'll project as a fund balance going forward. So we'll need to obviously set money aside, either be it board contributions, employee contributions, or then change the plan and cut expenses.
Ms. Sellers, then. Ms. Cunningham?
We cannot change anything, though, until January of 2019. Is that correct? Because we negotiated, so we cannot ask for more money. The money has to come from the board to cover expenses.
Correct.
Okay.
And plan, and plan changes the same for 19?
Yes, that, I knew that because it was negotiated. Are we at the same level of negotiation for 2019? I thought that we were going to be able to do some changes without fully negotiating. Everything still has to be negotiated?
Yeah, yes, we have to negotiate any of the changes in the plan. That was some, what we changed in the impasse process was just the language that the plan itself was in the contract. We still have to bargain what's inside that, what's inside the actual plan.
Okay.
Impact bargain, anything that affects the employee.
Okay. How is this going to affect our ending fund balance? Because obviously, we can't change the plan. It's losing money in leaps and bounds here. So it's got to come out of our fund balance. And have you looked at it? And what is, what percentage is it going to take of our fund balance to keep us going through the end of June?
What we, what we need to first do is, again, I'll, I'll put that into the budget presentation. One, one of the first things they mentioned was the $891,000 shortfall has to be covered. And we would have to do that out of the, this year's current fund balance. So we will put that on there. We will show you the effect. That's one tenth of, approximately one tenth of a percent. And so we're projecting and we'll show you that at next month also about 4.5, 4.6 ending fund balance. Hopefully, that will grow a little bit and get closer to five by the end of the year, but that's what we're projecting. And then it will be the board's decision whether we move that funding in. I would recommend we do that, at least cover that. And then we move forward with, and continue negotiating to get enough revenue or changes that Allison will certify the plan to this day.
We had said, because I look, but it looks like right now we have 48 days because we had, as a board, accepted that we would have 45 days in reserve. Well, now there's already negative three days, so that's 48 days. Isn't that about 14.4 million?
It's, it's, and again, last year was, the fund balance was 12 million, which was an extremely healthy fund balance. But we ate that up in one year based on a good majority of it being those large claims. And so we think we would have finished right around what we projected at 27. Not the best, but it's still on the plus side. It's a high enough percentage that would look good if it was in your general fund. And then we figured we'd continue these conversations and move forward. It's just an extremely bad year, actually two, on those large claims. And that's what put us, with the other things of just not adding any revenue or changing the plan at all. You can't do that.
And we'll be, you think they'll certify us if we have zero fund balance? Because you said the 890.
No, I, I thought that and Allison corrected me. That's one, that's step one. Then we have to show them an injection of revenue by either the board or the employees or a major plan changes that'll lower the cost of the plan. And therefore, you'll have a plus up on that. So we have to do a combination where they'll feel comfortable that it's sound.
But we can't change it for this year. So we're continuing to lose money every month.
Correct.
So what is it going to take, the bottom line? How much money do we have to put in from our fund balance to be certified for this year? Because I'm sure they can look at our plan and see what's happening.
I have a number, but I'll let Allison tell her.
Okay.
So I don't have the number off the top of my head. So that's the, can I use, may I look at your?
Yeah.
So we're projecting a 17.2 million dollar loss, just expenses over revenue for 2018. So that would be the, if you wanted to do an infusion of funds between now and June 30th, well, actually, I guess now, in the, end of the calendar year, that is what we would need to reflect in the projections. We would need, you know, a commitment that the board was doing that for 2018. Then the challenge would be making sure that if, if that was considered an infusion of funds, we'd need to know that either something comparable or there were going to be all the changes that you could make for 2019 because it's projected, based on this revenue and expenses, to lose $23 million. So we'd need something to, to offset that going forward.
Okay. Ms. Cunningham, then Mr. Harris.
Couple of things. Each year that we come in this group discussion and we talk about this, each year, we've talked about increasing the contribution to the health plan. And I just want to say here, as we go into negotiations for this, we have got to raise the contribution that we do and we need to show a percent increase every year. You cannot stay at one value of $594 per year for five years and realizing that in all of the economies of the world, everything is getting more expensive. So we definitely need to talk about increasing, however we increase, board contribution, employee contribution, wherever we are in negotiations. But I would like to make it publicly known that I'm not going to support anything that keeps the same value year after year. There has got to be, even if it's a 1%, 2%, 10 bucks, 20 bucks, I don't care, something yearly. Everyone knows it's upfront, it's planned, whatever. I think that's critical because we can't stay flat any longer. Look where we are. Secondly, I'm extremely disappointed that we are here at the end of the year and we're finding the gravity of this now. I would have thought that something could have been brought to us prior to 12 months. And thirdly, you talked about cutting health expenses. I think Mr. Prone did. Well, I'm going to say, as we look, I want us to look at increasing revenue and not cutting expenses because if we cut expenses, my fear is the first place you're going to go is the health clinics. And I believe that the two health clinics that this school board has put in place are the two most valuable tools that we offer our employees, including myself, who uses them both. And I don't want to see us go away. At my, one of my last visits to the Haint City one, there's a group from a county south of us that is coming and looking to see what we're doing and what we're doing correctly. I mean, it is huge to be able to have that option. I mean, it is huge to be able to have that option. If I have to tomorrow have a co-pay to go there, I'm okay with that. Of course, this is all bargainable, so I get that. I'm just saying. I think we have to do what we have to do, but I do not want chopping the health clinics to be at the top of the list. I'm sorry. I feel they are so valuable, and I can't tell you how many teachers and employees have said, "Thank you so much, school district, for thinking of us and putting them, you know, at both ends of the county, so everybody can get to them." So, yes, and I'm sad that we're to this point. I don't know what else to say. But if there's anything that we can do, as you said, the infusion, 17.9 million, I don't know where on earth we're going to get that, and we're just about to talk about safe schools and what we need to do there. I don't have the answers, but certainly, I'm sure we'll be committed to do what it takes to make it right.
So if I can comment?
Go ahead.
The priority I would, would recommend to the board is first find revenue.
Yes.
To increase. Changing the plan design is going to be huge, and the costs to get there are huge. And I think we just need to educate what that means if we have to, to make those changes. So the first thing I would, is, I would like to try to do is raise the revenue by whoever, and through negotiations, but I think it needs to be 80 to $100 per employee per month.
And I know you all have been talking about that.
You know that 594?
Sure.
But that's, I didn't say who is paying it.
Right.
I just said, that's what I think is.
That's what it needs to be.
Yeah. And if we could start that July 1, which is prior to the next plan year, which is January, that would even be more beneficial. The last comment, the last recommendation I would make is to change, do anything with the clinics.
Okay.
That is not the problem.
Okay.
Clinic, absolutely not the problem.
Right.
And matter of fact, they're a huge benefit, as you mentioned, not only to the employees' current, but to recruiting. So we would not make any recommendation to change that. There may be some services that might not be there, or we could negotiate, because they cost extra, and so we could look at that, but the clinic itself, both will, will not. And so I would leave it at that, that, no, any other questions, but I think we need to infuse revenue, and that's where we're going to look through negotiating with the unions.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris, what's next?
Two observations. One, I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that the reason that we're getting this report now is not that it's late, but it's after the end of the plan year, which was December 31. It's no longer the end of the fiscal year, it's December 31, so that's the reason for the report now, correct?
Correct.
Because if you'd have given us anything earlier, you would not have known what the plan expenses were going to be for the remainder of the term. So all it would have been was a progress report, not an end of the year report, which is what this one is. But another point, and I think it's a point of view, and I think all employees have to look at this $15 million loss, because I'm including the 12.3 million dollars that were in the hole, plus the 2.9 million that the district has already kicked in. So we're basically about a $15 million hole. In essence, in 2017, we gave an additional $15 million in compensation to the employee group. Because that's what ended up happening, is we paid out expenses 12 to 15 million dollars more than the revenue that was contributed solely by the district. So in essence, the employee group has gotten that much of an additional raise. Just make sure that we understand that was a benefit. Thank you.
Okay. So Mr. Townsend, then back to Ms. Sellers, then Ms. Fields.
Guess, to echo Ms. Cunningham's thoughts, I want to see an index. I want to see if that's for, for us, you know, moving ahead. That's, that's a thing I want to see built into our budget, moving ahead, if that's three or four, four, four percent, whatever. I just think we have to do that. Other than that, you know, what I want to see is, what's the timeline for when we'll see this plan, and be able to comment on it, and then vote on it? I mean, I'm not terribly concerned about who's to blame for how it got to this point or whatever. I want to see what, you know, let's, let's go ahead and get it fixed, and, and see where we are. So what's, what's the timeline for that? When, when can we have votes on this?
I'll comment, and then let Allison, if I'm wrong. The extension is going to be requested through June 30th, so we would have to send it by then, so the meeting in June, we would bring you a plan. But between then, we'll be talking budget, and I'm going to have to put something on that budget line for the, for when, when we build that. And it'll be a figure, again, like I'm talking about, whether it comes from board, or employees, or a combination, whatever. We're going to need to put something and put a wedge in that, so that we can send that to the state.
One clarifying number on that 80 to 100 per employee. Are you talking about per employee of the, the district, or a participant in the plan? Like if, if an employee's got a spouse and a, and two children, that's four participants in the plan?
Employee.
Pure employee.
The 590, is it 594 we showed?
Yes.
That we're paying? That would, I'm saying, add to that number. That's per employee per month, not the dependents.
Okay. Ms. Sellers?
I just had one other question about the 17.9 million that, we're going to have to come up with that amount. Is that my understanding? To survive through 2018? Does that have to be reflected in our fund balance at the end of the year? Because that's going to put us, it looks like it's about 1.7%?
Seventeen's projected.
Okay, so we won't have to put that, that's what my question was. We don't have to put it in before June. We have to put in some amount before June.
It would be helpful to put in before, and then continue, and be continued, not just as Allison, not, not just a one-time payment like we've done the last two years. We need to make it sustainable every month.
So we'll be making?
In recurring every year. And you saw what happened in '13 when we did that. We, it became extremely healthy. And then costs don't change, or healthcare costs don't go down. And so if there, and, and again, we did, we had a good trend. It's just you can't, even at 5%, 4%, 5% trend, it's going to, that increase that we put in in '13 goes away.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Fields?
I want to go back to the question that Ms. Cunningham referenced about some type of a report. Yeah, I know, it would not be exact, but is there any possibility of getting like a mid-year report? Understanding that it's not going to be 100%, but at least we can be positioned and understand that, you know, this, this might just be something that we need to really look closely at?
Yes, we could, we could do a quarterly, quarterly report, and starting in probably June, and then do one in October. Because again, as Mr. Harris said, it ends December, so, and, and we were starting to get concerned in October, and as Jan said, even January, that we're just learning, is, is now worse than what we were projecting. So every month just kept getting worse and worse. And it was snowballing, and so there was really no, so I apologize for the timing of it, but it is the annual, and, and, you know, I could, we'll do a better job of updating, and maybe we'll do a quarterly report.
Okay, I appreciate that. It is what it is, and we have to work through it. The impact of a health clinic, I think it's very important that the community, the employees, and everyone understand the value and the impact. And I don't know that we've had any kind of data that would show what kind of usage it has been for both of the clinics, but I think it'd be very helpful. I don't know how much we promote as far as utilizing the clinic as much as we can. I know I use it rather than going to the doctor, unless it's just something that I have to do. And I think, long-term, we can see some better results by utilizing the clinic more. And then, the last statement that I would have is that we've talked about gradually increasing premiums, and we have just not done it, for whatever the reasons may be. And I think that at some point in time, we've just got to bite the bullet and gradually, gradually make some adjustments, not one time, because people can't, can't deal with one-time increases that's dramatic. But I think that we are going to have to look at that.
And we'll, again, we'll bring that in budget. I want to go back to the clinic comment, and I'm not trying to not promote it, but we're, and I'll let Joy talk, we are at, we are using that thing so much, we want to build another one.
I know that.
And we just can't, so.
But we need to, we need to educate and make sure that everyone knows we're at capacity, and that we do need another clinic.
And we are getting that out. When we met with the unions, we told them this information, and, and because we need them, as you said, to get on board and understand what the finances are. And we also included a portion of that was the utilization, and how well we're doing with, and how much we're using.
Okay. Do we have any other questions?
Madam Superintendent, I know we've got this safe school discussion coming up. I'd like to recommend we take a short break and reconvene at 2 o'clock. Would that be okay with the board members?
Yes, it is. There are no further questions. I agree that we take a break and reconvene at 2 o'clock. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Superintendent, are we ready to start?
Yes, sir.
Well, first of all, welcome, and thank you for joining us for this part of our work session. In a couple minutes, we're going to have a discussion about safety in our schools and school safety. And at that time, I will invite our sheriff, Sheriff Jed, to come forward and share some of his thoughts about school safety. There will be an opportunity for school board members to ask questions, and then there will be a general discussion among the school board members and with the superintendent about the issue of school safety. I'm quite certain that much of that discussion will focus on the topic of firearms on school That is, I'm quite certain, many of the folks here this afternoon are, are here because of their interest in that particular matter. It's an emotional issue, and there are strong feelings on both sides of that issue. So I have a couple of thoughts before we get started. First and foremost, this is a process, and I'm going to ask everyone to please respect that process. With the number of law enforcement agents in this room, I don't suspect that's going to be a problem for us. I would like to offer also that everyone will have an opportunity to share their thoughts, their concerns, their ideas about school safety, and, and I'm sure the specific issue of firearms on school campuses at this evening's school board meeting, if you'd like to do so. However, there will not be an opportunity for the general public to make comments or ask questions about those issues at this work session. The work session is designed for the board members to have an opportunity to talk about the matter with our superintendent. Copies of our current policy are available to anyone who would like to see and learn about our, our current policy as it relates to firearms on, on school campuses. That policy remains in effect until such time as the board and the superintendent take action to change that policy. The question that has been posed to me is, will there be any action at this evening's school board meeting? And the answer to that question follows. There is no agenda item coming before the board this evening addressing the matter of firearms on school campus. So unless there's something completely unforeseen or unforeseeable, there will be no action taken as it relates to that matter at this evening's school board meeting. That doesn't preclude anyone from coming and speaking to the matter at this, at this evening's school board meeting. So at this time, I would like to invite our sheriff to come forward and discuss safety issues with us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, honorable school board members. It's my honor to be with you today. And in addition, I have with me Andy Pollak. Andy Pollak is going to make a couple of comments at the end of my comments, then will answer any questions you have. If you don't know Mr. Pollak, his daughter was one of the 17 people that were viciously murdered just 27 days ago. And he has worked across the state and has offered to come and support you in the decision-making process today as we move forward. I've also asked my teammates, the police chiefs, to be with us today, because I don't, I don't like to think of it as a unique relationship, but maybe it is because we operate as one, whether you're in one of the various cities, or in the unincorporated area. Our team all works together. And we do that because we all serve the people of this community, as, as do you. So I appreciate the chiefs and their staff for coming with us. And of course, my staff is here, because I think it's always important to bring your brains with you, okay? So they're the ones that have all the, get all the credit for the research. We have difficult decisions and some circumstances ahead of us, but the district's school boards, as you know by law, are responsible for promoting a safe and supportive learning environment in all of our schools. And it's unfortunate that the real world we live in today even requires us to have this meeting. The layers of prevention we will be talking about today is not something that we want to do, but I believe it's something that we have to do in order to ultimately keep the schools safe, the staff, the, all the employees, the visitors, and certainly, most importantly, our students. And there is never a 100% guarantee, no matter what we do, that says we can prevent an active assailant from ever occurring again. All we can do with our layers of support for this program is to reduce the probabilities and guarantee we keep our kids even safer than they are today. We, as law enforcement professionals, would never come here to suggest to you how you write curriculum, determine topics of instruction, or suggest systems for carrying out that great institution that you're in charge of. Just like we would never go down to Lakeland Regional Medical and to, and to direct them of how they should conduct heart surgeries. We're not specialists in that area. But my colleagues and I are specialists when it comes to keeping people safe and secure in this community. Our crime rate this year in this county is at a 46-year low. You have never, ever, ever been as safe in Polk County as you are right now. Let me give you a couple of qualifiers. I'm not here to talk politics or gun control. I'm here to discuss the options that are available in our ongoing partnership to protect our children. So please allow me to complete the presentation, and then I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you have. I know that it takes three things for any program to be successful. It takes affordability, it takes sustainability, and it takes feasibility. And that's what we're going to talk about today. Those three requirements have worked successfully for us and the school system since 2013, when you partnered with our office for a school safe, safety director. Our safe schools director that we contract to you created with you in partnership layers of security that we've already accomplished together, and it's made our schools safer. Our schools in Polk County are already safer than many others across the state and across the nation. Let me go over just a few of the things, or remind you if you've not heard them in a while. We've conducted active shooter training, even holding a full-scale, multi-agency exercise. Together, we rewrote the Critical Incident Response Plan. We implemented emergency radio direct contact between the schools on our radios and our communication center, so we're not bogged down by even a very fast 911 call. We participated with you in principal roundtables. We've had extensive staff training concerning safety plans, critical incident response plans, videos, PowerPoint training for active shooter, bomb threats, and other incidents of emergency nature. We have done and completed active trainee, active shooter training videos for all middle and high school students. Our online training video for school volunteers has occurred. We've updated the lockdown drill policy even before it was inculcated in state law this year. We do three a year, and now we'll do more than that according to state law. But we have been visionary with you in doing these things, and there's more. Campus visitor control checks. Partnered with Safe Schools, School Board, and Peace River to evaluate potential threats from students. We already do the things, some of the things that they talk about in the new law. We have standardized safety bulletins disseminated district-wide. We have a see, if you see something, say something campaign in the school system. We have domestic violence and gang-related training for, for our school board employees. We've developed the Gang Resistant Intervention Program that you know as GRIP to target youth who have a proclivity to enter gangs and use violent activity on our school campuses. In addition to that, what you may not know, in the In addition to that, what you may not know, in the sheriff's office, we have a system we call Five or More Calls for Service. If we go to any business, any residence, five or more times in a calendar month, we go back again without a demand for service call to their house usually and say, listen, most people don't call law enforcement five times in their life, and you had to call us five times or more last month. What's happening here? Do you have a kid problem? Do you have an unemployment problem, a money problem? We dig down with the family unit at that point in time and say, what is it that's caused you to call us? Because we are short-term problem solvers. And then we hook up with the United Way and their programs, and we try to filter these folks to long-term assistance. In addition to that, when our deputies Baker Act someone, do a mental health emergency order and take them into custody, once they're released from that custody, our deputy's required to go back and make a follow-up and say, hey, how's it going? How are you feeling? Do you have your appointments? Do they give you medication? Are you taking your medication? If you can't afford the medication, if you don't have it, what can we do to hook you up with the services so that you can receive that? In addition, one thing that's unique here in this community is our crisis intervention training, where we have one hundred percent of our deputies trained in the entire agency for crisis intervention. So we can recognize mental health challenges, people that are in crisis, people that have drug and alcohol issues, people that need help, and know how to respond to them, and know that sometimes their appearance of aggressiveness is not aggressiveness at all, so we have de-escalation involved. We brought this up one day at the police chiefs' meeting, and I asked, chiefs, what do you think if at the end of the police academy, we just automatically do another week where we've got everybody in the police academy, so we're all trained across the county and in the cities? Not only did they agree, but Chief Giddens says, we'll help train it. The other chief said, we'll help. So the reality of it is, we are doing things that benefit and give us an early warning system inside the sheriff's office and our various police departments that are not even specifically inculcated in your policy. We've also conducted sites, safety evaluations for schools across the county. We've provided recommendations for target hardening. Many of those have been completed, but there are some recommendations that date back to 2014, four years ago, which still have not been funded by the school board. That is a minimum amount of $5.7 million, and that's some of our old numbers before the economy started back, and I'm certain everything is more expensive in the school hardening environment now. So as you can see, together, we have already layered in a lot of protection that maybe other school districts have, maybe they don't. But we've tried to be visionary because you know what? We study each and every one of these active shooters across the nation, and they're all horrible and horrifying. I understand it takes money to make changes. And that brings me to the recent legislative act. If you'll indulge me, I'd like to talk about our new opportunities that the new law has afforded us, and then I'll circle back to the budget. When it comes to school safety, you've heard me say it over and over again, and I'll say it some more. It's a layered approach. There's not one magic answer to this, or certainly, we would all be doing it. As you know, on Friday, the governor signed the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act. This legislation gave us additional layers that we can implement here, but it's the school board that has to make those decisions. Let me take a moment to talk about some of the provisions in the new law, which give us more tools to keep students and staff safer than ever before, if only we take advantage of the tools. First, it raises the firearm purchase age to 21. It adds a three-day wait to purchase all guns. It strengthens the mental health and Baker Act provisions. We have a provision that we've never, ever had before now. At the time of a Baker Act, the law enforcement officer may now seize firearms and ammunition of the person being Baker Acted if the person is a danger to himself or others and there is a credible threat of violence against another. We can hold those firearms for a cooling-off period. It also creates an opportunity for us to go further and obtain a risk protection order. So this law enforcement tool will allow us to go to a court of competent jurisdiction, as they say in the law, and seek a temporary ex parte order to seize and hold firearms of the Baker Acted individual for a longer than 24-hour period of time if the possibility of harming themselves or others in the near future is reasonably present. It takes us a little further. At the same time, if they happen to possess a concealed weapons permit, we can seize that as well. It creates a multi-agency assessment and services team for students at each school, which now must include law enforcement participation. It allows school districts to refer students for mental health services. It creates community action teams, mental health teams. It creates mobile suspicious reporting apps with Crime Stoppers funding for students and staff, and for that matter, anyone else that chooses to use it. It designates a position of a school safety specialist, traditionally an administrator level in the district office. It requires a school safety and security risk assessment of at-risk students. It requires infrastructure, safety, and security assessments. It mandates active shooter drills. It eliminates one of the most important things, barriers of information sharing between mental health service, the school system, and law enforcement. Many times currently, you may have a mental health worker on the campus, working with an SRO on the campus, and they're not permitted by law to communicate back and forth about the issues involving that particular child or person that's under care. And the last point I'm going to talk about is it mandates that there's a school resource officer or a school safety officer, and a school safety officer by definition is a police officer that works for a school board police department, or a guardian on every school campus. And make no mistake about it, whether it's a school resource officer, the school safety officer, or a guardian, they are simply the last best opportunity to keep our children from being murdered when all other layered preparations, trainings, and interdictions have failed. And here's the cost, and it comes down to funding. If you look at the unincorporated area alone, for public schools alone, the first year startup for fifty-six additional law enforcement officers is $7,102,000. The second year, when your training, your infrastructure costs are not having to be repurchased, that drops down to $5,270,000. I have extrapolated the cost based on our data for the different cities just to give you this information. Let me underscore completely, this is not presupposing that we would put school resource officers in the city. Certainly, that's the chief's priority, and if they chose not to participate in the program only, then would I do that? But I'm giving you the cost based on our numbers, which could vacillate up or down a little bit. They would need approximately forty-four school resource officers at a cost of $5.596 million the first year and a reoccurring at $3.9 million, right at $4 million. So if you come together, for the public schools only, we need approximately 100 new law enforcement officers at an initial cost of $12.7 million year one, and the reoccurring cost of $8.9 million in year two. Now, when you add the charter schools to that, you add another 29 positions countywide at $3.6 million the first year, $2.5 in the reoccurring year, that bumps the cost up for charter schools and public schools to $16,373, and a reoccurring of $11,594. But for why we're talking about such minor amounts of money, let's go ahead and throw the private schools in. That for 71 private schools is another $9 million. So when you add it all together, if everyone took advantage of having a school resource officer, just one, on every school campus, it's about 200 people, at a startup cost of $25 million and a reoccurring of $17.9 million. That obviously is significant money. The legislation, when I look at it, does not allow enough money to come anyplace close to that. But the legislation also creates the guardian program, and quite frankly, the guardian program was inculcated in this to give the school boards across the state the option, another option, a more affordable option. This is only if the school board agrees and the sheriff of the county agrees. And in addition to that, this has to be a volunteer by the school staff, not a voluntold program, but a volunteer program. The guardian cost to initially equip and train is $3,866.81 per guardian. So what does all that mean, Grady? It means you can select, evaluate, drug test, and psychologically test, and train 32 guardians for the cost of one school resource officer. Let me say that again, 32 guardians for the cost of one school resource officer. I'd like to clarify some miscommunication that's occurred during the legislative process due to the lack of knowledge of this guardian program. Historically, here's where it began. It began with my Sentinel program. The guardian program that's inculcated in state law today began because the legislative body asked for the only Sentinel program, or the only school-trained program in the state of Florida. They inculcated it in the House and in the Senate. They initially changed it from the Sentinel program to the Marshals program, and then from the Marshals program, they appropriately renamed it after Coach Fice, and it's now the guardian program. The purpose of the guardian program is not, and I underscore not, to arm every teacher in a classroom, but it's only to give the various Florida school boards affordable tools in the pursuit of keeping teachers safe. It gives an opportunity for well-trained staff members to protect the students that they love, our kids, and when necessary, to stop an assailant from accomplishing the evil task they've set their mind to when they walk onto our school campus, killing our children. It's important to understand, this is not the first choice or the second choice. It's below all the layers that we have discussed, that we have in place, and that we will put in place according to Florida law, but it's the last best option when all other layers of protection, for whatever reason, have failed to produce the desired results, and the armed assassin is making his way toward your child's classroom to kill him and all of their classmates. That's all this is for. Now, some people don't want teachers to have guns because of a trust issue. Well, I have 100% trust in the teachers and employees who are properly vetted and trained. I have taken the risk prior to this law of making them special deputies and accepting the personal and the professional liability. Do you know why? Because our children are worth it. We trust them, we trust these teachers every day to teach our children and to keep them safe, and they do. We see evidence over and over and over, if you study and analyze these shootings, to see that school teachers and staff members are charging active shooters with nothing to protect themselves or the children, just to try to distract and save a child. So why wouldn't you want to give them one last best opportunity to stop the active shooter from shooting your child or our grandchildren? Dr. Engel, the president of Southeastern University, was the first to take me up on this. I have discussed it with the, not this superintendent first, but the previous superintendent, as well as others. Dr. Engel says, I'm on board because I understand that you can't learn if you're not safe. His quote that I give you today is, many teachers have said that they don't want to carry, and that's perfectly okay, but there are plenty others who would gladly step forward to protect and defend our children and their right to a safe education. Coach Aaron Fice gave his last full measure in one of the most heroic acts that I've ever seen, which is why the guardian program is so aptly named for him. So what I ask next shouldn't be construed as being negative toward his actions at all. But what might have happened if he'd been armed when he came face-to-face with that mass murderer that day? I can't answer that, but in a minute, Mr. Pollak will. The scope of the duties for a guardian is very narrow. Only in an active assailant can they act. And let's just be honest, and here's why my staff so appropriately and professionally created the Sentinel program in 2016. This is the data that we see and study every day. The FBI data said that active assailants, from the beginning of their horrible event to the end, averages between two and five minutes. Law enforcement response time, on average, is always plus five minutes. It's hard for us to say this and to understand, but when seconds matter, minutes don't work. We just can't get there in time, and we never will. There has to be a way to close the gap and create a shorter response time for the good guys to interrupt and stop the bad guy. And here's the bottom line to it. If you want to play the statistical probabilities based on the 2016 data, you're 450 times more likely to be killed in a car crash than you are to be shot in the United States by an active shooter. But statistics don't matter if you're the statistic. And if we were playing the statistics game, none of us would have seat belts or airbags in our cars. The bottom line is this, the cold, hard facts, and it shocks me that we're having to have this conversation today, is a good guy or girl with a gun is the only thing that can stop a bad guy with a gun. We can put in early warning systems, mental health interventions, hardened security, and law enforcement in place, and hopefully will prevent the killer from ever showing up. That's our goal, early identification. That's why we push, if you see something, if you hear something, say something, because the active shooter that's going to be on a total rampage on the campus, we can knock on his door and walk in and have a conversation with him a week earlier with no violence at all. But when that doesn't work, we can't live in denial. We've got to look at the data and the research, and that's what I'm here about today. It's not how we'd like it to be or how we want it to be, but how it really is. All of those great tools are necessary because... All of those great tools are necessary because every one of them reduces the probability of the active shooter. But when they fail, the last best chance to save your child is having a well-trained guardian on the campus and/or a school resource officer. Here's what we believe about that. One school resource officer is awesome, but one school resource officer in a shootout with one bad guy is not good odds. We teach over and over and over, and that's why you see multiples of law enforcement officers at events. We know if we can send the right people early on to the bad incident, multiples of layers of people, that many times the bad guy looks at the odds and he goes, "I'm done, I can't win this." We know the active shooter never, ever, ever is going to encounter a shooter, someone shooting back on campus because it's against law. We're all rule followers except for him. So if you look at one or the other, that's good. If you look at one and the other, that's better. The guardian training program is now a hundred and forty-four hours by state law. This training component, and let me talk specifically, it exceeds the firearm requirements of a state-certified law enforcement officer by twenty-five percent more firearms instruction. The guardian has to show a proficiency at five points higher than law enforcement. The deputy that shows up at your campus day one, the police officer that shows up at your campus day one, fully certified and competent to do the job, has less training than the guardian in that discipline. Which brings me back to the top. A successful program needs affordability, sustainability, and feasibility. We have a very short time to get there. It's only a hundred and fifty-three days until the first day of school on August the thirteenth. And let me underscore one last time, we're your subject matter experts, we're your allies, we're your friends, you know, and I know, I love y'all. Jackie Byrd is one of my heroes. We are here because we care about you and the staff, and we're going to do everything that you allow us to do to keep the children safe. So please be assured that our commitment today is one hundred percent. If we show you ten new protocols or layers, and we say as professionals, we recommend all ten of them, and you say, "Grady, we like one, five, and ten," we're going to implement one, five, and ten. I am publicly going to say, by leaving out two, three, four, six, seven, eight, nine, you are shortchanging our ability to keep you and the children safe. But that's your decision, you have to make that. And I certainly, certainly can tell you that you have our undying support for this. So I'll leave you with a one last horrible question that you must answer, that we answer every day in law enforcement, and it's an evident question. If some crazed killer has gotten through all our prevention, all our security, and is walking down a school hallway with a gun towards your child's classroom, do you want someone there with a gun that is well-trained and knows how to use it to stop that shooter before he kills your child and their classmates? That's the only question we have to answer. That's why school resource officers and the guardian program is the last best choice, certainly not the first. Before I take questions, let me introduce you to Mr. Andy Pollock. Andy's daughter was a senior at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School when, twenty-seven days ago, Meadow was viciously murdered.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Andy Pollock, like the sheriff said, and my daughter Meadow, which is still tough for me to say her name, she was killed on February fourteenth. So I just, I want, I'm here today to go back to that date and tell you about what happened during the time, because what I'm going to tell you, I don't get from the news, I get it right from the homicide detective on the case. And, and the reason why I'm here today is for school safety, and I don't want this to happen to any other family or, or child again, because I, I feel it's my obligation to get this out and be here, because it's very painful what I'm going through and my family, what they're going through, my sons, my ex-wife, everybody involved. I, I can't, and I hope you never have to feel what I have to feel. So that day, the first sign, there was a, I don't know how it works in this county, but they had some type of monitor at the school, outside the school, and he was working some gate. And he saw this person walk right into the school with a rifle bag, this person. And he got on his radio, and he called in intruder. So that, and that's all that gentleman did. After that, sorry, this is tough for me. After that, he, the shooter went into the, into the building, and he took out his rifle, and he put his rifle together, and he started shooting everybody on the first floor. And they, they weren't, some type of lockdown. A lot of the teachers weren't trained efficiently enough, they actually had the children opposite the door, so the shooter was able to shoot right through the window of the door, and he killed a lot of students right in the classroom. Instead of them being on the wall, if you can understand what I'm saying, he shot them right through the window. So after that, he goes up to the second floor, and that's where Coach Fice comes into play. Coach Fice went into the building with no weapon at all, and he went in and went up to the second floor, and he confronted the shooter, and I know this because this comes from the detective that watched the video, not from any news station. Coach Fice was, I asked him, because it was bothering me, that how unlucky could this coach be, that why couldn't he come just from behind him and grab this guy? And I thought about that for days, and it was just very bad timing on Coach Fice's part. One second different, everyone on the third floor could have been saved. But the point I'm getting is that Coach Fice had the chance, if Coach Fice would have been in a guardian program, Coach Fice would have saved everybody on that third floor. So now I just, I just want to go back and talk about Coach Fice a little bit. So I coached at a high school in Fort Lauderdale, it's called St. Thomas Aquinas. I coached lacrosse. Couple of coaches there went to school with Coach Fice. Coach Fice told me he was, the gentleman that went, that I coached with, that went to school with Coach Fice, told me what kind of person Coach Fice was, and, and they couldn't talk more highly about him. So after this happened, I went and I spoke with the Fice family, because I was very involved and instrumental in getting this bill passed in Tallahassee last week. And I talked to Coach Fice's parents, the mom and the brother, because no one could really reach Coach Fice's mom, ah, the wife, sorry. His wife's name was Melissa. So I had the chance to talk to them and discuss, because in my eyes, he was a hero, and I wanted to talk to his mom and the wife. So I spoke to them, and I mentioned to them about this guardian program. I wanted, I didn't want to just be, I wanted to get informed how people thought about it and how Aaron would have thought about it. Aaron's mom told me that he was, he would have loved that, the guardian program, but she was having, she, they haven't talked much, the mom and the wife. So she told me about how courageous her son was, and then, and I listened to her, and then it took me a day, I couldn't even get his wife's number, she hasn't spoken to any other member, anyone that's been murdered in the school. So I, I reached out to her and I spoke to her, because I wanted to get her blessing on putting his name into that bill that we had in Tallahassee. So I finally got ahold of Melissa, Aaron's wife, and she told me that Aaron would have loved this program if it was in place. He would have really wanted to be a member and go through that training. So then it gave me more inspiration when I worked on the, the bill with the Speaker of the House in Tallahassee, to rename it, instead of being like a Marshall program, we named it after Aaron for being such a hero, we named it after Aaron Fice. So it meant a lot to me, and they were very supportive of it. And to get behind it, when they said that to me, it made it even more powerful than something I believed in, because that coach, if he was in that, he definitely would have saved all six, and, and one would have been my daughter on the third floor, who was shot nine times, not once, nine times on the, on the third floor at this, eighteen, nineteen, fifty-eight, that's his number in prison, because I can't, that's the only way I could say that, eighteen, nineteen, fifty-eight. So I'm here today because, look at me, you know what I mean? You guys don't want to see another family member go through this. And there's a lot of good points that I want to bring about with this guardian program. The media makes it out to be like we're looking to arm, it's like about arming teachers. It's not about arming teachers. I don't think there's one sheriff or deputy in here that would just say, "He's okay with arming a teacher." It's about finding the right person, even if it's one out of fifty, that's capable and comfortable and would want to volunteer into that program, then we should, we should back that person. It's a, they're going to be sponsored by, by the sheriff, they're going to go through, it's not a weekend course. I had to listen to lawmakers in Tallahassee thinking, "How could we give a teacher a weapon? They're going to go to school, they're going to go to class for a weekend, and they're going to come out carrying a gun in school." That's far from the truth. This course is going to be over a month long, a hundred and forty hours this person has to go through, and they're going to be, when, after they finish that program, they'll be more trained than a police officer for that situation. So if, that's one, one of the things with the guardian program, one of the employees at the school might be able to do something like that. And I know as a fact, probably ninety percent of the teachers aren't even going to want to do that, and, and I could respect them for that. And there's another reason that I backed the program is, say, a lot of the schools, I don't really know how you run it here, but they have monitors and people that work in the school, security, so the school districts and the school board now will be able to, be able to look for, say, a retired law enforcement person. They have twenty, twenty-five years law enforcement experience. They could take that person, put him through the guardian program, where he gets another hundred and forty hours of program, training. Now you have someone like that at your school, twenty years' experience, a hundred and forty-four hour course, and look what you get now at your school. You could get someone like that, you could get three, four of those people for the price of one SRO officer. And, and I got one more point about it, because like Sheriff Judd said, it's really, if you think about it, after nine eleven, they instituted air marshals. Since nine eleven, has anyone ever heard of an air marshal shooting someone on a plane? It's never happened. So like, like the sheriff said, this is only really a last resort that, God forbid, it ever happens again. Maybe they could have stopped, they could have stopped someone when they got through the first tier of security. So it's really a precaution thing that if it happens, we failed somewhere at the first line of defense. But I'd rather have that second or third tier in the school with, with someone who's highly trained. And, and that's why I'm here today, to express my feelings, what happened, and to hopefully you listen and, and it won't happen again to anyone else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollock. We are so very sorry for your loss, and we thank you for being here and sharing your story, however difficult that must have been. Thank you so much. And at this time, I think, Sheriff, did you have some of the comments?
Honorable board members, me, the chiefs, Mr. Pollock, we're here for any, any questions you may have.
Okay, board members? Mrs. Fields?
First of all, thank you, Sheriff Judd, for being here today, and Mr. Pollock, thank you as well. I have some questions about the, the budget that you had given us, and I wanted to know if you can be a little bit more clear on the first year, what that encompasses, and then what does the second year encompass?
Yes, ma'am, the first year encompasses everything, the recruiting, the training, the equipment. And the second year, of course, your recruiting, your training, and your equipment is all purchased, and that drops out. There's obviously reoccurring training, but it, but it's factored in. That's why the first year is such, so much more expensive, because no one's got fifty or a hundred patrol cars hanging around that we can, we can roll out. So it's hugely expensive year one when you put a law enforcement officer on, on staff.
Okay, and the other question I have, you might not be able to answer it, but the, the monies that have been designated for safe schools, do you know if any of those dollars could be utilized to offset these additional expenses?
It's my understanding that nationwide, they allocated about ninety-seven million dollars for the school resource officers. And I don't know how that, that parcels, parcels out to the different school districts, but I know rough numbers, and, and this is certainly subject modification. I was told in Tallahassee, and that's always dangerous to learn anything in Tallahassee anyway, that there's about four thousand schools without a school resource officer. So you extrapolate that, that is about four hundred million in need to put one on every campus across this state, public schools. That's not counting, I don't know if that's counting charters or not. I just don't, I just don't know about that. But it's hugely expensive.
And can you tell us how much currently, the percentage that we are paying for, to have your folks to help us currently? Is it fifty percent, seventy-five percent? Do you have any idea?
It's about seventy-five percent. The last ones we've had, asked one hundred percent funding, because quite frankly, when you look at the time that goes into them on the school campus and the after, afternoon and evening events, plus the fact that they are school board people, we, we, when we get them back in the summer, in order to keep costs down, we allow them to earn comp time, so they comp off most of the summertime anyway, not all of it, but most of it, and then they do their training and their SRO training and their reoccurring training. Plus, quite frankly, we're facing a circumstance in the state of Florida, and you're well aware of it, the school board was exempted, but the counties and the cities weren't, where the people are going to have the opportunity to vote themselves a tax cut, and that effect, that is going to affect Polk County alone by about ten million dollars next year, not counting the cities and their cuts. So when you look at it, we have, when we raise the bar to this level, and this is, also includes, right now we have gaps in coverage, because our school resource officers that may be assigned to high schools or middle schools also have the responsibility for elementaries. So if there's an issue at the elementary school, they leave the high school and go to the elementary school. Well, when they leave the high school and go to the elementary school, then there's no one at all on the campus. And once again, you know the size of our campus and the populations, tactically, having one school resource officer on a campus is, is not sufficient. Tactically, having one school resource officer on a campus is, is not sufficient. Now I can, and, and that's why as it's, it's better than nothing, but it's not sufficient. What if they're not on the campus? Well, we can't have that under the new normal. But what if they're on the campus and they're down in the banner room dealing with an issue? The active shooter can come in the front door and they may never hear them, depending on the size of the campus. What we're trying to do is give you a multi-layered approach that ideally, the dude never gets to the campus. We've identified him way in advance and have dealt with him. But this is only the last best example. Now, the reality of it is, you're getting a fully trained law enforcement officer. But you really only need a sliver of his or her abilities. So the question is, if you're hungry tonight, do you go buy the whole cow or do you buy a steak? Well, under the current system, you have to take the whole cow. And my staff will probably kill me for that example, but it's true. Or do you want the steak?
I have some other questions, but I'll yield to the board, other board members.
Thank you, Mrs. Fields. Ms. Reynolds?
Um, for Central Florida School Board meeting yesterday, everybody kind of went around the room and talked about how many SROs we would need to fill our schools. I know we need a hundred, pretty much every other district in the area is between fifty and a hundred. Are there four hundred, five hundred school resource officers that we could get trained and into Florida schools before August? I mean, how feasible, how many do you think we could even possibly get before the first day of school?
Now, thank you, Ms. Reynolds. The reality is that if I had a hundred people and put them into school last Monday, I couldn't get them through training before beginning of school next year. We will process four, five hundred people through our process to hire thirty or forty. There, with the, with the onslaught and the rush, if all the money was there, if all the money was there, and money, money wasn't even a consideration, and you extrapolate that over the state of Florida, it'll take us two or three or four or five years to add that many all in, in one lump sum with the other natural attrition that occurs. So the, the reality of it is, we're, we're very agile and mobile and when the bad guys make us hostile. But we can't get you there. We can, we can even use overtime and off-duty people and that sort of thing. But you can't, that comes back to, how, how long can you sustain that? And I'm not sure there's enough off-duty time in any of our agencies to cover this many schools, five days a week. You know, eight or nine hours a day. That's our internal problem to get there, whenever you make that decision. But understand that if you had the money, we cannot get there, we cannot get there in a year. We probably can't get there in two years. That doesn't mean you, we leave the schools empty. It means there has to be other monies spent to cover the gaps. And if everybody is in that same environment, the question is, even if we reach out to our colleagues, which we could across the city lines here, and use other city officers in the county and county officers in the city, cause, cause I can, I can authorize on mutual aid, the, the chiefs to help us. It is, when, when you're hiring a law enforcement officer, the, the requirements to hire, the requirements to train, the requirements to maintain training is difficult. And when you're, when you have a swimming pool that you're choosing people from, ours is a wading pool with about that much water in it. That's all that get through the process to be a law enforcement officer.
Thank you. I have one more. Um, the, for the, it talks in the bill about the recurring training. What does that look like for the Sentinel program? How many hours and how often?
With the reoccurring training, we have what we call online training that we would do quarterly. Because you always give online training. But then that they would qualify between once and twice a year to show proficiency. So it is not a one-time, hundred and forty-four hours and never again. It has to be reoccurring training. But your costs go down significantly. And, and there's economies of scale to all of that. Obviously, as the chiefs and I have talked about, and, and look folks, I, I can't say enough good things about these professionals. Because they said, hey, hey Sheriff, we'll all kick in, we'll figure out a way to get everybody trained. Cause we all trained by the same standards. But at, at the end of the day, perpetually, regardless of whether it's school resource officers or certainly guardians, we're going to have to have a training adjunct for the school board because it's that big.
And then one last one. I know you, you talked about the number of hours they have to qualify. But I know you had mentioned in previous conversations, the level of accuracy that they have to obtain. Can you just talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, in order to qualify as a certified police officer, you have to, you have to qualify at eighty percent or better with your qualification scores. We require an eighty-five percent for the guardians or in, in my case, at the office, our Sentinel program. And we would require, though the law doesn't say that, we would still require that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Uh, Mrs. Sellers?
I have the figures and it's way under providing a resource officer for every school. I think they gave us three point three, almost three point four million dollars for additional school resource officers. And that, it's maybe a fourth, a quarter of the money needed, especially that first year.
Yeah, they'll spend it all in one place.
Yeah. And our total safe schools allocation for next year is five point two million. And I don't know what that includes, if that's just resource officers or is there other expenses out of our total safe schools allocation?
Mike, you want to address the, the amount? But I know the safe schools, we're, we're scheduled and slated to take care of the schools first with the resource officers. That is what we should do first.
We, um, received one point eight last year, all of which went for school resource. The five point two is the big bump.
What is the new money? Okay, so the five point two for resource officers?
Three point four million increase.
That's the increase.
That's what, so we can see it's not going to cover every school. And it's hard to choose some schools and not others.
Can I just clarify? The, uh, total expense was three point some odd million for all the resource officers. We use the one point eight that we get for that, so there's a more general fund that we kick in.
So we put in about a one point, another one point nine million that we put in. So there is, um, at least three point, um, four million, but it's not nearly enough. I would like for our district to really sit down, I know it's hard at this point, but to think, because I think that every school needs to have this kind of, um, protection. I just don't know how, and it's hard to figure it out. But I did read your plan, the Sentinel plan before, and the training is, is really, really good. It's not, it's carefully thought out. And, um, I do believe it's more than the police officers get in just handling a gun and being able to shoot. So, um...
And quite, the, the opposite, there's, there's more than money, enough money in the Guardian program of the state law. So there, there should probably be zero additional cost incurred there. And we, we even tried to have them move some of the mo, money from the Guardian program over to the SRO program. And they wouldn't move it over there. Now, the governor seems to think they can reprogram some of it, but it, it still doesn't get, get us near where we need to be. So the reality is, right now, there's more money than we probably need on the Guardian side. And there's way short, and even if they moved all the Guardian money over...
It wouldn't be enough. Is there a possibility that these guardians could be uniformed? Because I, if they were uniformed, I, I feel like people would, they're certainly going to be well-trained. But could they be uniformed?
Do you know, I would never say never. We would have to think outside the box, which I'm, I'm always glad to do. But let me suggest something tactically. The, when you have someone in a uniform, they're the obvious target. The beautiful thing about having people that are confidential, that people don't know who they are, when, when people take their children to school, they don't see, they don't see guns, they don't see anything but a beautiful, wonderful school campus full of wonderful teachers. But if the horrible opportunity ever arose that we would have to respond, then they just materialize literally out of the different areas of the campus and are there. And that gives them more of a tactical advantage. And even if you have a school resource officer on the campus, my personal opinion, I'm going to make what y'all want work. I would still have guardians. And I would have them work with the officers because when that officer says, I'm about to be in a shootout, I need help, his help's still minutes away when he needs them in seconds, because everyone needs backup. So with or without it. And, and we can, you know, ultimately, over a period of time, maybe we can layer in all of it, which would be ideal.
I, I have a question. I don't know if you can, the Guardian dollars are different from the resource officers? So this resource officer money, we can at least get this?
The Guardian dollars did not come to the district. They did not come to us.
Okay. So these resource officer dollars, the extra dollars that came, we can, we will use those for resource officers?
Yes, we're working, we're in conversation right now, how that's going to look for eighteen nineteen with those extra dollars.
Um, I would really like our district to, to at least be in conversation to figure out if there's some sort of way we can use guardians without putting fear into our schools. And, and I know classroom teachers, to me, that's unreasonable because they're teaching and they should be focused on their kids in their classroom every day. But there are other, there are other personnel on campus. There, there's military, we have ex-military people, we have ROTC instructors. And maybe we don't do it, but at least go through all the conversation and see. Because the more you talk about it, the more ideas that come up on a way that we can have all of our schools protected. Because the resource officer dollars absolutely didn't even begin to cover our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sellers. Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just a couple of things. Based on the funding and the dollars that we currently have for our resource officers, there is simply not enough dollars to go around. I mean, I think it's obvious, whether you factor in the twelve point eight million for a hundred new officers for the public schools, and then if you add in charters and private and all, that's just, I mean, while we need to continue with the SROs that we currently have in our schools, um, we have to look at that next layer of protection, in my opinion. Looking at the Guardian program and hearing more about it today, and Mr. Pollock was very poignant in his comments to me, I did take an opportunity, as I've been visiting schools, to ask some of the staff at my schools, administrators, teachers, support personnel, how they felt about this. And I've talked to a myriad of people, some of which are conceal and carry folks on weekends. And I said, is this something that you would actually entertain doing? You know, as, as part of a, I called it a Sentinel program at the time. And, um, I had mixed reviews, certainly. Some felt like, yes, they would be willing to go through the training and learn to be able to protect. And others asked me questions, and I'd like to pass some of those along to you today.
Sure.
Uh, one of the questions I was asked was, they understand that in previous trainings for SROs, like maybe two years or two years ago, um, for, for someone who would be in this program and was an SRO, that their job, if there was an active shooter, would be to go in the perimeter of what was happening. But from this person's understanding of the current SRO, they're required to go to the shooter and to put themselves in line's way in order to prevent two or three children being hurt and take it instead. So I said, you know, I don't really know. I said, I'm sure Sheriff Judd will have an answer for that. Um, and since we're on TV, or whatever we are, publicly being recorded, um, I didn't know. Is that, is that a correct assumption of how they're being currently trained?
The, the people we select, if you approve it, and they volunteer, will go through an incredible background and psychological, psychological. For example, twenty people volunteered at Southeastern University. Only nine of them made, made it through the entire process. So it's not a hand me a gun and shoot twice at a target and you're in. But that's part of the screening. We want them to run to the threat to save the children. And not wait for the threat to come to them because they're, they're killing kids. And, but that's part of the selection and training. And if we determine during the selection, the evaluation and the training, that they don't have the personality for that, they won't complete the, the course. And it's not for everybody.
It's not, no, no. And I've had some people that I talked to as late as yesterday, who are previous military, um, and said, I'm in a retired time of my, I, I, I just could not. So that has to be respected, who, who comes forward. So I guess the next question is, as we go through the schools, um, to look for potential volunteers, is that something that you would handle, we would handle? How, how, how does that work? That was another question.
That would have to be in concert, first off, they'd have to volunteer and want to do it, not be voluntold, okay?
Correct, not voluntold, right.
And second, it, the, the first process is, what do their supervisors think? They may say, they may say, hey, this person's all gung ho, but my goodness, that's the absolute last person in the world I'd ever hand a gun to. Well, that's part of the background. And, and the, the reality of it is, we, we certainly wouldn't select that person. Bec, and, and the reason is, this, this is why you have to underscore. It is, it's so disingenuous, the way the, the media portrayed arming teachers. Because this is going to be the very select few that have the personality, the intuition and the desire. And I, like you, I've talked to a lot of teachers and administrators who are my friends. And I've had some say, I just don't have the personality for it. And I had others say, you know, I don't like the idea, but I can do it. And they're not going to kill these kids if I can do something about it. So that's, that's, and I don't think any of us want to do this. You, you know, in a sense, this is surreal that we're even having to have this kind of conversation. But this is the world we truly live in today. And until we have a magic ball that tells us who the next shooter is, so we can get to them in advance, and the layers of protection, and like, like, uh, Mr. Pollock said, we got an air marshal on the plane after we put you through all the security. So it's not that we can ignore any of these other things. And we're going to get better at this as we get our, get our feet on the ground and see what all we can do with this new law as far as changing or exchanging information. And we can go back and tweak the law to give us more tools later on. But at the end of the day, this is when all else has failed. What we're talking about today is he is walking in your child's classroom with a gun. And we're not there.
Well, I would just like to say that, you know, after listening to everything, um, and I know as a board, we're going to have to have more conversation. But, um, I, um, as difficult as this is, you know, we all have kids or grandkids in school, um, I really feel that it's a level of protection that we need to discuss. I don't know what the answer is, I don't know to what degree. I know that we need SROs to continue in our schools. I know that we need SROs to continue in our schools. But I would definitely support a guardian program administered by our sheriff's department. And how many and where, obviously, that has to be, that's more in the weeds than we are here today. But I believe it needs to be looked at with the world in which we live. And I just want to say thank you, Sheriff Judd, for taking the time and bringing Mr. Pollock to speak to us today. It really had a profound effect on me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. Mr. Townsend?
I'm probably going to need a little space, space here. We've heard from the sheriff for a while, so I'm, I'm gonna, if you bear, bear, bear with me. First, you know, you went on television last week and reminded us of our responsibilities. This was after you had run up to Tallahassee without consulting us. You know, I think your name should probably be on, on the bill. You had a lot to do with, with writing it, and I suspect the funding structure as well, although I don't know that. Additionally, the people you were doing it with are the most anti-public school human beings who have ever lived. Richard Orkin is an absolute enemy of public schools and has done more to make them unsafe, if they are, has done more to inject stress into, to them than, than probably anybody has. So I just want to make that point. I mean, you said, you said at the beginning, this, this isn't a political thing. Of, of course, it's a political thing. An act of politics is what just happened. And now we're dealing with the aftermath of, of it here. I would have loved to have consulted with you to give you some input before you went up, up, up there. Unfortunately, that, that, that wasn't on the table. Yeah, I think you're right. I, I mean, I, I do look to you as a subject matter expert. And I think one of the places you've fallen short here is, I don't think you understand what goes on, not just with, with, with teachers, but with administrators and with coaches who are also teachers and with staff who have jobs inside our schools every day, that they're doing all the time, that require pretty significant attention. The, the guardian program, the funding, as I understand it, envisioned somewhere around fifteen hundred guns in Polk County schools, that's a lot of guns, that will always be in proximity of third graders or will always be in proximity of ninth graders. You know, the, the analogy, and I've written this before, and I, I, I think it's a, I think it's a very sound policy that you have. You don't allow your corrections deputies to carry a weapon in jails, either, either exterior or interior. And no, for the television, I'm not comparing our kids to, to, to prisoners. However, third graders are impulsive, ninth graders are impulsive. There is grabby behavior from time to time. And even very well-trained people get careless. And that's why you don't let them carry guns in your jails. They are a disruptive and destructive force that could erupt at any time. Fifteen hundred guns in our schools will kill kids at scale over time accidentally. All it takes is one guardian who, who gets, who, who, after passing the, the background check, suddenly gets divorced from his wife, has a, has a bout of, of, of a mental health problem and goes off and massacres a class. All it takes is one. You know, those are realities. Now, do you have any kids in the public school system, as some sheriff, any grandchildren current, currently?
I do.
In the public school, school system? Okay, good. I mean, I, because I do as well. I have a ninth grader. And, you know, I can tell you that i- in addition to being told on either side that I'll be held personally responsible for a third grader who blows her head off because the gun the guardian had wasn't properly secured, or being told I'm going to be held respons, 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 responsible if someone dies in a mass shooting, you know, those, those are pretty serious responsibilities to be told. I take them pretty, pretty seriously. On top of that, I'm talking about my own child that I love. And so when you said statistics don't, don't matter, I think you're completely wrong. There has never been, to my knowledge, and perhaps you can correct me if I'm wrong, there's never been a school shooting, a mass shooting of any kind, like a, a major rampage shooting where a small arms fire repelled that, that attack. You know, I, I, you know, they, they, they'd all escape or killed by SWAT, SWAT teams.
I can, I can correct that. We had three deputies with a handgun just kill a guy with an AR-15 that was shooting at them and trying to kill him.
Well, that's, that's, that's not a mass shooting. I, I, I said a mass shooting.
It would have been had we not been there.
Where, where, well.
It would have been if we hadn't have been there.
Where, where, it's fine.
There was a house full of people that he was coming to kill, and we stopped him with handguns. So you got.
Three, 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 three and a four. Sheriff, I've listened to you for an hour, an hour and a half without interrupting you.
I've, I've been glad for you to interrupt me.
Yeah, I think the, the other point I would like to make, as the parent of a ninth grader in schools, I would really like to know who in this county, or I'm sorry, I, I don't want, I don't want, want, want to know, but I want you, you, you to know. And I would like you to want to know who owns the AR-15s in this county. If he's got a peer that has the access to, to one who is in crisis, I would like you to want to know, to know that. And I, I think with your ability to innovate and willingness to, to, to innovate, we could impose a pretty impressive gun safety pro, 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 program here.
It's against the law.
Well, you just changed, changed the law because you're a pretty talented guy. I would like you to, to, to advocate with, with us to make Polk County the safest gun, gun, gun ownership community in Flor- Florida. Are you willing to do, to do that?
I'm not here to talk about politics today.
You just went up and did politics. That's all you did for a week. You, you just went to Jeff, Jeff, Jeff's essence. Betsy DeVos thinks we imposed guns here in our schools because apparently you weren't very clear with them. I, I had to correct her multiple times. You know, I.
I was invited.
I, I, I will be happy to.
I was invited, just like I'm invited here today. I didn't volunteer, they invited me.
So, did, did you make it clear that the, the, the program at Southeastern, was that a private college?
Yes.
Well, how did that information get out wrong?
You're from the media, you know how that happens.
Well, that's a different thing. You know, I, the takeaway here is there is no consent, 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 consensus. There is no agreement at, at all. Sheriff and I are both elected officials in a county. I don't think the sheriff understands what goes on in schools. I think he wants to put distracted armed people at all times and has given no thought to the, to the, to the level of accidental shooting. There are anecdote after anecdote after anecdote of, of, of people who were carrying, even, even police officers who are fully trained, leave, leave their, their, their weapons floating around. This is a dan, a dan, dangerous issue. And I, I'll be the first one, one, one to say that if a mass shooter, if I'm a, a, a teacher faced with a mass shooter, I would love to have a gun in my hand at that, that, that moment. But life is not magic. The gun does not magically appear in my hand at that moment. And the consequences of having it, fifteen hundred guns in Polk County schools will kill kids over, over time. And if you force this on us through funding, which it sounds, sounds, sounds like it's being done that way, you know, this holding responsible stuff will go both ways.
I'm not forcing anything on anyone. That's your responsibility and your determination. I'm the subject matter expert. I am recommending to you professionally evaluated, trained systems and processes. You can either accept it or reject it. That's up to you. And I'm going to support the decision that you make, the latitude that you give law enforcement in this county to keep the students and the staff safe.
So elaborate then on, on the, the reasoning for not allowing, allowing carrying in jails. Why, why, why as a subject matter expert?
Are you, are you ready for this?
Yeah.
I'm not going to elaborate on that. It's a security issue.
Sheriff, are you a member of the NRA?
I don't think that's any of your business.
Mr. Townsend, I thank you for your comments. I, I think those are probably better discussions to have with the board. And were there any other questions you'd like to ask?
No, no, I'm good.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, sir. I'd like to go back to what Ms. Reynolds brought up a while ago because it brings up a similar question. Her question was regarding the cost and how long it would take for us to get up to speed statewide with additional SROs. Shifting that conversation a little bit, what would it take to get up to speed if the Sentinel program, Marshall program, guardian program were instituted rather than having the hiring and training of SROs?
You, you, you're dealing with a cost of, and this is SRO, this is your guardian, plus the infrastructure, about three thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. And it's about a four-week training. So it's going to be a little less than a hundred and sixty hours, about a hundred and forty-four hours. So theoretically, and still, even with that program, if you said, great, let's start with three on a campus, it would be a full court press to get it done if we can even get it done with the resources already here by the August thirteenth date.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mrs. Fields, did you have some follow-up questions?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to ask the questions first.
Yes, ma'am.
And then I'll give my opinion after that.
Sure.
That's what I thought we were doing. Where would a weapon be when not in use with the Sentinels?
Yes, ma'am, that's a security issue, and we don't discuss it publicly because we don't want the bad guys to know it. But there is a very detailed system and process by which we, we handle that weapon.
Okay, well, I have spoken with a lot of employees in the school district, a lot of administrators. And the feedback that I've received is that they do not think that there is any place in the schools to have guns other than by a law enforcement officer. That's what I've heard.
Yes, ma'am. I've, I've heard that too, and I've also heard the opposite of that.
Yes, sir, I'm sure.
Depending on who you talk to.
I'm sure. And one of the things that has continuously been talked about is can a Sentinel or a Guardian take a child out? There's a big difference between taking someone out that you're not really familiar with day to day. But when you are intimately involved with students, and it would definitely be a student probably, could a Sentinel or a Guardian do that? And are they going to be mentally trained and mentally prepared in a situation like that?
That's part of the training process. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And, and we make that abundantly clear from the very beginning. And if they don't have the personality to do that, they won't make it through the process.
Okay. And I'm sure this is a safety question too, but I'm going to ask it anyway. What are the rules for when they can draw? I know you can't answer that either. And that's fine, but I just want to make sure.
Now, I can't answer that partially. When, when, when the guy is marching down the hallway with a, with a gun in his hand, that's what we call in law enforcement, a clue. So when he, when he comes into that campus with that thousand-yard stare and is coming toward us, that's when we're going to teach them to start shooting him, before he has the opportunity to shoot anybody else.
Okay, and what are the prospects that students or others could get caught in a crossfire?
That's a real possibility. The unfortunate, and that's why we talk about this being the absolutely total last option. Because whether it's a school resource officer or a guardian or a law enforcement officer that responds off of the street, when you have a person that is absolutely shooting and we have to engage that person, there is the distinct possibilities that innocent people scattering can be hit. But unfortunately, at that point, you're saying, do we lose five children or do we lose fifteen children? Because until you stop them, they're going to keep shooting. But we do know this, that historically, they're scattering from the shooter. They're not running to him. So there's not as much, there's not as much probability that we'll hit a student as there is he will hit students if we don't intervene. Because they're going to be leaving from him. But does the possibility exist? Absolutely. And if we suggested otherwise, we wouldn't be truthful with you.
Okay, I have two more questions. And, and this might not make much sense, but I'll ask it anyway. How are they expected to distinguish between an active shooter and a non-uniformed teacher? I think Ms. Sellers referenced something about maybe some type of uniform or something that would distinguish them, especially when everybody's in panic mode.
Yes, ma'am, and that is another valid question. First off, the system is defined and created so that the school resource officer, who obviously will recognize them anyway, and any responding backup officers will clearly know that they're the good guys. And that's all the information I can give publicly. But let me advance that for just one second. Currently, when we go to an event involving guns, we're having to discern who the good guys are and who the bad guys are. Because if we're going to an event in wherever or the city police officers are going to an event wherever, and there's off-duty deputies or police officers at that event, and there needs to be guns brought forward to restore peace, we're already having to decide because we don't know all of the police officers and all of the deputies, nor do they know all of us. So we're already dealing with that issue. But we go further than that. There will be a clear reminder of who the guardians are.
Okay, and so are we now supposed to give our thoughts? Are we going to finish with the questions?
You're most welcome to share your thoughts at this time, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to thank you, and I want to thank all of the law enforcement folks in our county for putting us in a good place. The comments that you made, that we are much further along than other communities and, and, and we can't say enough about your staff that's currently a part of our staff now. And, and we thank you for that. I don't think that private individuals should be allowed to have guns on our campus. I think that we really need to work hard to ensure that we get monies, get the resources to get law enforcement folks to do their jobs and to make sure that we keep our kids safe. I understand the value of the Sentinel or the Guardian program in a, at a college campus, but I don't think that it's a good place in our elementary, middle and high schools. That's just my opinion. I would like to see if there's any way that we, and this is not directed to you, Sheriff Judd, but this is directed to our, our board. I would like to see if there's any way for us to look at our sales tax referendum renewal that's coming up soon and to see if there's any way for us to be able to get some of the funds diverted to SROs or to law enforcement folks to help us to continue to have our safe schools. I know that Sheriff Judd said that it's going to be years before we can staff what we need to have in place. But I think that we have to start thinking on what those resources look like. And maybe we can have it at another conversation. Maybe Mr. Bridges can get with the county folks to see how that looks, or it might be a state issue. I don't know what that looks like. But that's just a fruit for thought. But I want to thank you again, Sheriff Judd.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mrs. Fields.
It's our duty to, for y'all to decide. All we can do is advise. And then, then, as I said before, we're going to be your, your biggest ally and your biggest supporter and make whatever you decide happen.
Thank you, Mrs. Fields. Sheriff Judd, you've been very kind and generous with your time. We still have some follow-up questions. Do you have some time to continue answering questions?
Sure.
Ms. Reynolds?
I wanted to echo too. Thank you for being here and.
I wanted to echo too. Thank you for being here and, and being an ally and truly giving us all of the information we need. We're not experts on security, and we're not experts on transportation or any of those things. So we really do rely on your department to educate us on what you see best fit. That being said, I was not a huge fan of the program when it came to Southeastern. That's great for a college, but I did not see a place for it in public schools. However, in the past several weeks, with conversations with you and with other SROs and teachers and family members, I think this is a huge value in our school to have Guardians. The biggest problem I have with the program is the PR it's gotten. And that's not your fault. That's certainly not Rachel's fault. But there is, you know, several of our other board members have even referred to as it being teachers and private citizens that are carrying. These are people who have gone through training at the sheriff's department and are special deputies, correct, that you have authorized that authority?
The Sentinels are sworn in as special deputies. We wouldn't have to use that authority with the new Guardian, but it would be the same thing.
The same program. That it's not, we're not handing teachers guns. If you show up with a concealed carry gun on a campus, you still will be arrested for it. But I, the PR for it has been awful, very misleading, and I'm truly disappointed in our media that it has become teachers carrying guns, because that is not what this program is. And I thank you for your efforts and for trying to set the record straight. I greatly appreciate you being here.
Thank you. It's, it's, it's truly our honor to be here. And like we say, you know, I'm, I'm the messenger. I'm going to give you the best information. But I do remember there, I have the institutional knowledge. I was at the sheriff's office whenever we decided to put school resource officers in school. We had the same pushback from the same group of folks then. And one dear school administrator, who was a friend of mine and a hero in this county, looked me in the eye as a friend of mine and says, "Grady, over my dead body, will we put an armed, uniformed police officer on a camp, school campus?" And it was the same pushback then. And the reality is, if you tried to take one away, then it would be my dead body. So, there you go. It's, it's a new normal. It's a change. I'm telling you, I believe in the training. I'm the one taking the risk, because you can go, "Hey, I, you know, I told the sheriff, you know, that we were concerned." I'm concerned, but I have faith in our selection and our training. And then, then I'm willing to take that responsibility, only if you give it to me. I'm not marketing for it, but I truly, in my heart, you know, even Billy and I agreed on one thing. If you could magically get that gun at that moment in time, when everything else has failed, and that's all we're talking about. Certainly, my dream and hope is we, whatever system we put together, the layers catch them. And that's, that's going to be our goal, is letting the layers catch them. So all of this is, whether you have a school resource officer, or Guardians or a combination, and I would suggest to you that even if you had the money for every school resource, every campus to have a school resource officer, which would be ideal, that you would still need Guardians or multiple officers, because you never want a one-on-one gunfight, if God forbid that happens. And statistics do matter, if you're the statistic.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Mr. Townsend?
One sort of random que, I shouldn't, try to say this nonspecifically. The Run, Hide, Fight video I've seen that I think is used does not, I think, apply to the school setting, which was interesting to me. That might be something to look into.
Absolutely.
I don't know how that came to be that way, or if it, or if there's multiple versions of it. And the second part, and I think, you know, you talk, talk about things that we can agree on. I think, I think the training aspect that the Sentinels get is, is outstanding. And I wonder if we'd have benefit for gun ownership as a whole, if we, if we tried to require some sort of level of training like, like that. Doesn't, doesn't, doesn't have to be that extensive. But the, you know, the, the model I've talked about a lot is let's, let's treat guns like cars. You know, I'm, I'm sure you're, you're not going to want people to give away their, to get rid of their driver's licenses, or, or not have tags on their cars, and, and, and not have titles. You know, it occurs to me, a lot of these, these new things that have been passed involve connecting mentally, quote-unquote, mentally defective people, or something like that, with weapons. How are we going to know what they have? And, you know, I, I, I think, Sheriff, a man of your talents, a man of your abilities, a man of your political influence, who could get Richard Orkin on the phone right now? You could text him and say, "Billy said hi," and he would answer you, could, could get a, a, a pilot pro, program in which we begin to, to impose a level of responsibility in, in gun ownership that's, that's comparable to how we treat cars? You know, I, 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 can, can you tell me why, why that's a bad idea?
You know, that's why I didn't run for legislative office. I don't have to publicly take positions on that. That's up to you and your colleagues in the legislative process.
But, but you, but you kind of do, Sheriff. I mean, you kind of do take, take positions. You can't, you can't be, with respect, you can't be America's sheriff and then a simple law, law, law man at the same, same time, you know? You know, you have a, again, you've, you've told us about our, our responsibilities. You've got a responsibility to, to, to this county as well. And whether you understand that or not, there are a whole bunch of people, and they may, well, everybody may vote me out, out of office, who knows? I, I never expected to be elected in the first place. But there are a lot of people who don't think like you. You, you represent, you represent a big and changing county, and with respect, I don't think you represented them well this time. You, 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 you didn't consider what they were thinking. You didn't ask them. And I would encourage you to think differently.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, sir. At Southeastern specifically, because that's where you've instituted the Sentinel program, and in the proposal for the application at a public school system, it is my understanding that whoever is on the campus, that is that deputized person, no one else knows who they are, in this case, other than our school SRO. Is that true?
Obviously, other school officials would know.
But the average person on that campus would have no clue whether Mr. Jones or Mrs. Smith next door is the one.
No, sir.
That's the Sentinel and carrying a gun.
No, and, and the, the advantage of that is so that they can't, so your active shooter can't obviously target somebody. Now, you can do enough detailed research, but the reality of it is that I suggest to you, do any of y'all know who the Sentinels are at Southeastern University? Same thing, you, you just don't talk about it. So that, that's exactly the way the program's designed.
The other final comment that I have, as a teacher, many years in history and American government, it greatly saddens me how few Americans seem to understand why the Second Amendment was added to the Constitution. There's a much, much deeper and bigger issue than what we're hearing today as the rationale for gun ownership in this country. I urge people to take a look at the history of why we have the Second Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Townsend?
To answer the sheriff's question, I, I don't attend Southeastern. I bet if I did, I would probably know who some, 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 some of them are. I guarantee you, the kids at Winter Haven High School, or Haynes City High School, or wherever, are going to know very quick, quickly, who's carrying. There are no, no, no secrets. So let's, let's, let's be clear about, about that. They'll, they'll probably be able to figure out who they are just from looking at, at them in some, some cases. But there's going to be very wide knowledge of who's, who's, who, 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 who's carrying. I would bet almost certainly.
I'm trying to determine, but are you against this, Billy?
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Mrs. Sellers?
I just want to thank you. This has been a very difficult subject. I know how you care about the kids in our county. And I know that this isn't political with you. I know that you really want to come up with a plan to keep our kids safe. So for that, I know your sincerity. I appreciate what you've done. And I know how hard this is, because none of us want to do this. But then we see the horror that happens right here in this state. So I just want to personally thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sellers. Any, any other comments or questions from the board? Well, Sheriff, again, just want to say thank you so much for your consideration. You've been very gracious with your time. We appreciate you and all of your law enforcement officers. I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
And I, I may have read a previous version of the legislation, but it appears that the law that was passed indicates that classroom teachers will not be eligible for the program. Is that, is that correct?
It's, as I understand it, it's a classroom teacher that has no other responsibility. Should they want to be considered, and they happen to be on the yearbook staff, I'm told that that qualifies them.
Okay.
But if they have another collateral duty, that supposedly allows them, should they choose to do that. And obviously, they may volunteer to do it, and, and part of the background is, the bosses have got to make sure that's okay.
Sure.
Now, I haven't gotten a legal opinion on that, but I asked the same, the same thing. And certainly, that's preliminary information. This is a brand-new law.
Well, apparently, we're, we're not quite done with you yet. We still have one more question. Mrs. Fields?
Actually, it's for Mr. Perron. I, I wanted to know, we talked about liability. I wanted to know what would be our liability if we were to adopt this program, and would it jeopardize us being able to get insurance?
I'm going to answer, we don't know what that looks like right now.
What it would look like would be self-defense. So he would be assuming the liability. And that, I mean, I've had some conversations. Should that occur, what would be our requirements from a professional liability if someone is going to be designated as that person? So I don't know exactly. It's too new, but it certainly, I, we've been having those conversations, and it is a concern. But we.
I'm glad you guys are having that conversation, because I think that it really needs to be looked at very closely, if we're going to have the majority to support this program.
It, it would definitely change our current policy. We don't know what, how.
Thank you, Mrs. Fields. Sheriff?
May I also address that, if, God forbid, there is an active shooter, everyone's going to get sued. If we come to you with a layered approach, and you decide against some of those layers, and some of those layers could have made a difference, at least according to the plaintiff's attorney, your liability goes up. If you share that with the sheriff and the chiefs, then we are into it. So we're either going to be a defendant with you, or a plaintiff's witness against you. But we're all going to be sued. That's, and I deal with lawsuits every day. So if the horrible event occurs, we're all in the courtroom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fields. Thank you again, Sheriff. Again, we appreciate your time so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
It's my honor to be with you. Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, we, apparently, there are no discipline, discipline, there's no discipline, discipline cases before us, as I understand it. Okay, so are we ready to continue this conversation? Or we're ready to move on? Okay, ready for the next item on the agenda?
Yeah.
Well, we, we have one item that could be, could take a little bit of time. Do we want to take a short break before we?
Yeah.
Finish it up? Okay, let's take a short, short break. We are going over the agenda, tonight's agenda. We have Brayden Burt leading on the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a special donation. I guess that's a special recognition.
Who's going down?
I think Mr. Townsend.
That'd be me. That'd be you tonight? Okay.
All right. So we have three sets of minutes. Any, anything on any of the minutes? Anyone has a question about, yes, ma'am?
I do. In the minutes on my part, there's a part that says that the, they gave us $45 less. It was supposed to be 47 cents more that we got. It is, well, because I can't get my machine to work here. I'm trying to get to my agenda. It's in the minutes of the work session, last work session. And it's where I'm talking, where you wrote what I said, when it, it was at the beginning, because it was.
Okay, can we check on that and, and get back to us? Okay. Any other questions, comments about the minutes? We have some new administrators?
Yes, we do.
Superintendent, okay. We have Business Services, grant applications with position C-11 through C-13. Any comments, questions? And if you don't mind, just raise your hand. Okay. We have the Business Services contract for Loffman Oaks. Questions or comments about that? We have a number of.
Donations.
Donations. Again, we can't, can't, it be, indicate how thankful we are for our community for stepping up and providing those donations. Any questions about any of the cash donations? Comments? All right, how about any questions or comments about the non-cash donations? This is C-39 through C-41. Well, yes, okay. C-42, 39 through C-42. We have Facilities and Operations items, Human Resources Recommendations items, 43 through 46. Questions or comments? And then 47 and 48. We're good with the agenda? Any questions or comments about anything on the agenda? All right, so the next item on, on, on our work session agenda is the discussion about direct employee contracts. And I know that Mr. Bridges made some, did a very nice job of compiling that for us.
Mr. Wester?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we expected to comment on this today? Or are we supposed to review this and maybe bring the conversation back next time?
Well, we're going to keep this on the agenda. So if you'd like to comment today, you're welcome to do so.
No, I haven't had time to do that.
Right.
And I was gonna.
Okay. Mr. Harris?
I have a couple of questions. Looking at the chart that we were given, position designation, could you clarify, ours says regular FRS. What's the difference between that designation and the other four that are senior management service class? That's my first question.
Florida retirement system has a variety of different classifications for membership. In, in Polk County, the only position that is senior management class is the superintendent of schools. By law, every appointed superintendent is, is senior management class. And law allows the, the individual school boards to designate other positions to that. It has a different contribution factor than the standard FRS class.
Well, then clarify for me, it was my understanding that many years ago, that the state designated what positions constituted senior management class, not the school district, and that people above a certain level were all included in senior management class. Am I incorrect?
That may be correct. When I came in 1998. When I came in 1998, I believe it was already set up this way. During John Stewart's tenure, the board designated a number of positions. When, when John left office and Glenn Reynolds came, he dispensed with that and took everybody back to the standard FRS.
So it's up to the individual school district, then, to designate whether that is or is not senior management class?
That is my understanding.
My second question, down at the bottom, you have a note here that Broward, Seminole, and Brevard are also in that category. One of the pieces of advice that I heard mentioned at a professional development training for school board members was your superintendent is the highest paid employee in the district. Your second highest paid employee should automatically be your attorney. For some strange reason, this district has never practiced that. I don't know the history of the why, but it's very obvious when you look at this layout and you look at the salary and you compare it to districts around the state, we're way out of line in doing that. This might be the best opportunity, an opportunity that we ought to seize, to correct that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mrs. Cunningham?
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments. I agree with Ms. Fields. I mean, we just kinda received this information today, which is wonderful. I would just like some time until the next meeting to discuss it, other than just a few questions here and there. And the only thing I would like to add, and I don't know how hard it would be. It's kinda hard to gauge. I mean, I kinda know, but like, what size districts are these? They're not all comparable to ours in size, number of students, number of schools. Pick, pick your pleasure. So in order to make apples to apples, Mr. Bridges, there seems to be room on, I mean, is there any way to put
Oh, I can...
something on there that would indicate the relative size of that district compared to ours?
Sure, we can, any, any additional information that you would like, I'm sure we can lay, we can lay hands on and include it.
If you could, something that would equal, so we could understand how they compare to ours. That's all.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Townsend?
Just sort of mechanically how, I, I agree to review this and come back.
Oh, sure.
But so are you, who, who is Wes, does Wes negotiate and Carol negotiate with us or with you, Lynn? Who, who's the, who's the party?
What, what we agreed to do was keep this as part of our agenda until such time as the board discussed it and then made, took some sort of action, which might mean, among other things, authorizing the chair to negotiate.
Okay, okay.
But, but I would imagine that would, we, we would have a discussion, consensus, if not a vote. I'm not sure how that will play out from a practical perspective about specifically what the board wants to see.
Do you, do you guys, this is maybe the other odd question. Do you guys plan to make a suggestion or, or do you want us to sort of review this and come up with the, the parameters that we want? I'm just curious.
I certainly don't, don't speak for Mrs. Matthews here. I think right now there, there are contracts in place, and if the board would like to do something different, certainly, we're always amenable to, to the conversation.
I think the trick is gonna be just having a conversation about it, coming up with a consensus of, of what we wanna see, whether we're happy with the current contracts as a board or want to see some changes. And then take action based on that discussion and conversation. Okay, any, yes, this will stay on the agenda. It's not, we're not gonna take it off until such time as the board members agree that we're done talking about it.
Mr.?
Yes, ma'am.
I think, personally, I think at some point in time, we need to set a timeline on when we want to get this done, rather than it continuously coming back each board meeting. That's just my opinion, because it could keep coming back until the end of the year.
Yes, and I think, I think we did agree that we would want something done before their next contract comes up.
Okay, all right. I don't remember that. That's fine.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine to discuss it at the next, next, next meeting and give some sort of direction based on that. If you guys want to, that's, that's fine.
All right. Anything else about that matter? So then finally, our board member comments. Normally, we do these first, and we've kind of moved these to the back of the order. Any comments from board members? Mr. Townsend?
You know, we, we just spent a long time talking about school safety, and arguably, the biggest problem we have with school safety right now is in severely disabled kids. We've had a series of things that have been really bad. You know, I'm, I, I still don't know exactly what happened with the, the girl who died on the bus. I guess it was our bus, but somebody else's school, and, and I, I think that's something. What, what I would like for us to have is an analysis of any sort of systemic problems we have with... What I don't want us to do is, is say a $15,000 a year pair didn't do her or his job. I, I, I want us to identify the systemic issues, if there are any, that are causing our training to, to, to fall short. I mean, I think in this case, there's some indications that either training was unclear, or they, or they, they didn't understand it, or, or we didn't give it, or I, I honestly don't know the answer to those questions. It was, and, and people didn't react in a life-saving way. I don't wanna study that from a blame point of view. I wanna study that from a systemic point, point, point of view. And I, we've just had too many very serious incidents in the last three or four months. And so I'm, I'm very concerned about that. I mean, that, that's, that's a very real safety issue. And I'd like, you know, the next, next meeting to, to maybe have some analysis of what, if anything, has gone wrong there. And if there isn't anything that's gone wrong, say it, you know? Let's, let's just, it's just been a run, run of terrible luck. But, but I, I think there probably are some systemic issues, and if they are related to funding and state funding, we need to identify that, you know? We, we, we need, we need, we need to be clear what, what would give us the best chance to be the best stewards of those children's lives, and because they're very, very important to them. Thanks.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yesterday was the Central Florida Public Coalition of School Boards meetings. And the new lobbyist from Pasco County was there and had a plethora of information that he shared with us. So these, Susan printed out these for you and put them by our stations. When he emailed them to me this morning, he said that they had kind of all worked together on them, which I don't see Wendy in the room. But it was just very, they had, there's one on the budget. There's one on the education bill, and there's one on the school safety bill. But it goes through each section and outlines specifically bullet points of, for instance, on the school safety one, it has, these are the requirements for the Guardian program, and it's 80 hours of firearm instruction, 16 hours of this. So it just was very, made it very easy to look at. It was, this is the first time I've looked at a bill, and my eyes haven't completely gone cross-eyed. But so just a couple of things that they mentioned on them. 7055 with the Hope scholarships and bullying transfers. There will be a 14-day investigation and act, and action by the district period. So from the time that it's reported, the district will have 14 days to take, to investigate the situation and take action. The thought that they think we can do that in 14 days and come to a conclusion is a little mind-boggling to me. But there was no, there does not appear to be language, and no one seems to know how it will roll out as far as if there will be an appeals process. So if the district comes to the conclusion that your child was not bullied, somebody looked at him funny, and they're actually a cross-eyed student, you know, that, something like that, that they could take it to the state potentially, and it could end up very much like our charter schools where everything gets overturned, was kind of the concern. But we, again, don't really have any information on that. It's a new law, and they're waiting to see how it gets rolled out. But that was something that other districts seemed to be concerned about. Talked about the unions' decertification in 7055 for unions with less than 50%. Some of the questions were, who initiates it? There was actually a union representative who told us it was based on the perk certification each year, and they will have to submit their certification every year showing that 50% of the employees are active in the union. Because there were questions as far, you know, if their dues aren't coming from, coming out of their paycheck and they're paying it on the side, how, where do we get those numbers? So it actually comes from their perk certification. I think, oh, sorry, I had more notes on Hope District, but I started writing down the side of my paper. The Hope scholarships, they're expecting to be able to provide those for 5,500 students statewide. And part of that will be, which, I don't, Wendy's still on here. They mentioned that part of it will be redirecting $105 to a trust fund from auto sales. But they alluded to the fact that that may not be, that, that may be optional, that, for them to redirect that money or not. So they were waiting on clarification from, that was one of the questions that they were gonna bring back to us our next meeting. And on 7026, which is the school safety law, one of the things that they brought up is that NRA has already filed a lawsuit, they believe, against just the age raise from 18 to 21. But they had just filed it two or three days ago, so they're still cycling through all of what's in that. And then, I think most of it, we talked about the rest today with Sheriff Judd. But, so yeah, I think that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Reynolds. And thank you for those documents. That's very helpful.
Thank you so much.
And he said he would send, as they're updating them, as they're getting more information, that he'll continue to send them to us so that, so I'll share those.
Because these are nice synopses.
Because they're, yeah.
Beautiful. Thank you so much. Really helpful.
Any other, any other board comments? Mrs. Sellers?
I will just say, the only bright spot I saw in the budget that they passed was that they did do a compression of those districts that were below the state average. And they gave you 25% of, they, they looked at the difference of your, of what you actually got to the state average, and they gave you 25% more. So we were one of the districts that got, I think we got 7.6, well, it's $7,680 because we were so low. So we were one of the bigger recipients of that. So that was, that was a bright spot for us. We're still well below the state average, but that did help.
Thank you, Ms. Sellers. Any other comments from the board?
I did get word that there was a, a bill that would have required an audit, that would have placed our half-cent sales tax initiative and referendum in jeopardy. Wendy Dodge went to bat for us and had, and got that fixed. And, and I have to say this, I know some of our board members are not particularly fond of Kelly Stargill, but she intervened on our behalf, and I think it's only fair that she get credit for that. So that allows our initiative to, to move forward. Yep. And so I'm very grateful for that. Thank you, Wendy, for, for getting on that and taking care of that. Any other comments from the board members? Okay. Appears that this work session is, what, adjourned? Thank you.